So, good evening, council and welcome to the June 15th public hearing. I want to start this evening with an acknowledgement that I think you're really be sad to hear, but also impressed. So, good evening, before we start the public hearing, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge a key staff person here at the city of Vancouver, who will be retiring this month after 25 years of service. So, if you've ever taken part in a public hearing in recent years, you'll have benefited from the exceptional behind the scenes work of senior planner, Michael Naylor. Michael began his career with the city in 1996, starting out as a planning analyst in the planning department led by Larry Beasley. Michael worked on a number of high-profile projects such as Northeast Falls Creek, Coal Harbor, Vancouver Skyline Study, East Fraserlands, and the city's first rental program, STUR, Short Term Encanters for Rental. Given his creative energy, aptitude for collaboration, and attention to detail, Michael quickly advanced through the ranks and now leads the Metro Core rezoning team. Michael possesses a depth and breadth of knowledge in every aspect of land use, planning and zoning, his legacy to the department and the city will be his thoughtful mentorship and the sound guidance he has provided to several generations of young planners and colleagues across the city. Michael's general manager and the city manager both speak highly of his professional contributions to the city as well as his friendship to colleagues across the organization. So, on behalf of council, Michael, we wish you well in your retirement. We hope you will enjoy many walks through the city to admire the legacy of the work you have done to make our city the dynamic, vibrant, and livable place it is today. So, thank you so, so much for your service to the city. It never seems like enough, so I could go on and we should, but again, thank you so much and virtual clapping is the best we could do at the moment, so, but thanks again. Okay, so with that, I'm going to call the public hearing to order. Please make sure to confirm we have quorum that your video is turned on whenever possible. Please let the clerk know if you're leaving the meeting as well, just so we can maintain the numbers we need of six. This meeting is convened by electronic means is authorized under the Public Safety Order M192, and we're all participating virtually. If my connection is lost or anybody's connection is lost during any portion of this meeting, we'll recess the meeting until my connection is restored. And members of the public can view the proceedings via live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out at Van City Clerk on Twitter. Video of council members speaking, presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected on the live stream when available. And lastly, following the updated guidance issued February 10th, which seems like years ago, in-person participation for local government meetings and public hearings is not permitted under the provincial health order. Speakers providing comments to council will speak by phone and a moderator will assist in passing the speakers through when it's their turn. So, with that, clerk, come at the roll call, please.
Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor De Genova. On the call, councillor Fry.
Here.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Bly.
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
You have quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks so very much. We want to acknowledge we're on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh people and want to thank them for their generosity to all who live on their lands. And we also want to thank staff that are, as we heard earlier today, amazing people that work in an amazing city, so thank you so much for everything you do. Turning to the meeting today, speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered, state whether they are in support or opposed, and if they are residents of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter for updates on the progress of the meeting, so they don't miss their turn. Any comments can be submitted in writing through our online web form, And the link will also be tweeted out. Speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay, so to navigate through the slides for your presentation, please say the word "next" and I'll help you through that. Right, and finally, we have a longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including a respect for all genders. So, council, when addressing speakers and staff, please avoid using gendered honorifics and instead rely, refer to the person by first and last name, role, or title. Reminder, our role tonight is to be quasi judicial body, which means we're only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, which is safe debate for after the close of the speaker's list and the moving of the motion. After hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve the application in principle, two, refuse the application, three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. So, with that, we're going to move to our first item, CD1 rezoning on 602-644 Kingsway. Does anybody wish to declare a conflict on this item?
It's ridiculous.
And I can ask those on the line to mute, we're hearing some background noise, thank you. Okay, so the clerk will now read the application and summary correspondence.
This is an application by Studio One Architecture, Inc. to rezone 602-644 Kingsway from C-2C Commercial District to CD-1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with 80 secured market rentals residential units, a height of 22.8 meters, equivalent of 75 feet, with additional height for rooftop amenity and a floor space ratio FSR of 4.05 are proposed. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval. No correspondence has been received on this application since it was referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list and receipt of public comments. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thank you so much. Council, we do have one person that signed up to speak to this, so we should proceed with the the presentation. Any speakers who want to speak to this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, code 77420 hashtag, and that phone number will be made available throughout the evening on the live stream and Twitter. So, we have Sarah Crowley here from the rezoning center to walk through the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm just checking that everybody can hear me.
We can hear you. We can see the presentation on WebEx. I'm just double checking, but I think it's available publicly too, so please go ahead.
That's great. Thank you for that. This is Sarah Crowley here. I am the rezoning planner in this application. This is the rezoning application which proposes to rezone the site at 602-644 Kingsway under the Secured Market Rental Housing Policy, also known as Rental 100 Policy. I'd like to note for council this evening that there is a yellow memo attached to your rezoning package to amend the stated building height in the report, and I will elaborate on that in the following slides. But just to begin, the project site is located on the south side of Kingsway at the intersection of Carolina Street. It is currently zoned C2C, and the properties located along Kingsway are primarily all zoned either C2 or C2C, which are commercial districts. There are mixed-use buildings to the east along the same block of the site. Robson and McCauley Parks are located to the north of Kingsway, across the road. There is a CD1 site located to the west of Robson Park, 445 Kingsway, which was approved by council back in June last year for a 14-story MIRP mixed-use building. Then, moving further away from Kingsway, the zoning comprised mainly of residential zones, both to the north and south. This image shows an aerial view of the site facing north. As you can see in the aerial, the section of Kingsway bends, creating unusual lot patterns. The site is relatively flat. It's an irregular-shaped seven-lot site, and it is approximately 1,800 square meters in size, with a frontage of 72 and a half meters along Kingsway, with a depth of 28 meters along Carolina Street. This image is taken from Kingsway facing south, and it shows the current context of the site. The site is currently occupied by four commercial active buildings with three residential units on the upper floors. The existing residential tenants will be eligible for compensation and moving fees established under the tenant relocation and protection policy. The applicant has been in contact with the commercial tenants about the redevelopment and have offered them a chance to move back upon completion of the project within the 11 CRUs also proposed, if interested. The buildings on this site were constructed between 1912 and 1937, but are not listed on the Vancouver Heritage Register. The remainder of the block also contains buildings constructed circa 1900, but like the site, are not on the Vancouver Heritage Register either. This area of Kingsway has a wide range of local amenities, childcare, schools, and parks, as can be seen on this particular slide. The local hospital, Mount St. Joseph, is located less than a five-minute walk to the west. There is a bus route number 19 that runs between Metro Town and Stanley Park, operates along Kingsway, and a range of local bike routes, for example, the Prince Edward Bike Route to the west, the Windsor Street Bike Route to the east, which connect both to downtown Core and the Central Valley Greenway to the east. There are five elementary schools located within a one kilometer of the site. The Vancouver School Board enrollment numbers indicate that future enrollment vacancies will exist at four of these schools. There are six group childcare and five local parks located within 900 meters of the site, which is approximately a 15-minute walk. This proposal has been assessed under the Rental 100 Policy. On November 26th, 2019, council approved amendments to this policy and renamed it the Secure Rental Policy. This rezoning application is a revision to an application that was submitted in January 2018 for the site at 610-644 Kingsway, and that was prior to the adoption of the newer Secured Rental Policy. Therefore, as the applicant has received a supportive response to the rezoning inquiry and subsequent application before the adoption of the new policy, the proposal is being assessed under the original Rental 100 Policy. This application proposes to rezone the site from C2C to CD1 to permit the development of a six-story building with 80 secured market rental units and commercial retail units at grade. The proposed building height stated in the report was 22.8 meters with a floor space ratio of 4.05. As a reminder, there is a yellow memo attached that is seeking to amend the proposed building height from 22.8 meters to 23.7 meters, with additional height for the rooftop amenity, going from 25.3 meters to 27 meters. The slight increase in height is requested by the applicant in order to accommodate larger mechanical energy equipment in the building as required under the green buildings policy for rezoning. The unit mix includes 36 two-bedroom and 10 three-bedroom units, and it equates to 57% family units in the building, exceeding the family unit requirements of 35% under the family room housing mix policy. This application was received in July 2020, and if approved, this project would provide approximately 280 both on and off-site construction jobs as part of the Restart Smart Initiative in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Under this rezoning, a partial closure of East 15th Avenue in front of the site will be undertaken, and the space will be used to create a public plaza. This space will provide an opportunity for commercial patio, public seating, potential cycle infrastructure, and additional landscaping to be established in the space. The image shown here is conceptual until further details are established at the development permit stage. The applicant is also agreeable to fund the public realm improvements such as installation of landscaping and street furniture on the plaza in coordination with our engineering department. This slide shows more concepts of the plaza fronting onto Kingsway and Carolina Street, as well as a conceptual site plan of the plaza, showing some of the uses that could be established on the plaza once constructed. 11 CRUs are proposed at grade that will front onto the proposed plaza, which will further animate this public realm. This slide shows the average market rents for newer buildings on the east side of Vancouver. And in the blue column, the relative affordability of renting when compared to the cost of home ownership shown on the right-hand side in the red column. As can be seen, renting is still much more affordable to the average individual or couple residing in Vancouver currently. In relation to public consultation, following submission of the revised rezoning application in July last year, all in-person public engagement was suspended in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Alternatively, a virtual open house was held by planning staff from September 8th to 28th, 2020. During the three-week open house, there were 111 views of the page with 42 of those downloading files, and there were 23 engaged individuals who submitted comments or questions during the life of the rezoning phase. Support received was in relation to the delivery of affordable rental housing for the Kingsway area, the high number of family units, the creation of the new plaza, and the partial closure of East 15th Avenue to accommodate this plaza, as well as support for the proposed height and density. Key themes received included the building height and design. Some questioned how affordable the renting units would be. Some had concerns about excessive parking and displacement of existing businesses from the site. In reviewing the application and public feedback, staff have determined that the proposed height, massing, mix of uses are an appropriate response for this site. The proposal, of course, will be subject to further urban design refinements via conditions contained in Appendix B of the council report. Regarding displacement of businesses, there is no policy equivalent in place for commercial tenants like the TRP for residential tenants at this time. That being said, city staff are actively reviewing options per council direction received during the presentation of the Employment Lands and Economy Review Phase Two Report back in fall 2020. It is anticipated that results of those findings will be brought forward to council in some time in 2022. However, I can report in the meantime that the applicant team have been in contact with the existing commercial tenants and have offered them an opportunity to move back into some of the 11 CRU spaces proposed at grade, if they are interested. Re-concern about the excess of parking, this application is eligible for a 20% reduction in residential parking and 10% parking reduction for commercial spots, considering proximity to frequent transit routes along Kingsway. Further refinement of parking requirements will be undertaken between staff and the applicant team at the development permit stage. In summary, staff recommend approval of this application to rezone the site from C2C to CD1, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report, as it meets the intent of the Rental 100 Program. If approved, the application would provide 80 new secured market rental units and contribute to the rental targets outlined within Housing Vancouver Strategy. Thank you. Planning staff and the applicant team are available for your questions.
Thanks very much for your presentation and just just wondering if the applicant team is here to speak to the application?
Yes, we're here. It's Jim Wong here from Studio One Architecture. So, we've been working with the planning staff to develop this project to this stage, and we don't have any other comments actually at this point, actually. I think it's going to be a good addition to the area and help revitalize some of that area. And the plaza, I think certainly on the corner, will be a big plus for the city and for the users, the potential users and CRUs in the area. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thanks so much. So, we'll move to questions. Remember, council, this is your only chance to ask questions of the applicants at this stage, although you can ask staff questions now as well. I don't see anybody on the question queue.
Mayor, I'm having a difficult time.
I was on the queue and I got bumped off. It's councillor Kirby Young. I would think I was on first.
Okay, here comes folks. It's populating here, so we've got councillor Fry as well. So, councillor Swanson, you're up first. Questions to staff or the applicant? Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. These are for the applicant. Would this be a pet-friendly building?
This is Carrie Bonis. Hello, councillors and mayor. Thanks for the opportunity of reviewing this application. To be honest with you, we've been talking about that internally just for other properties we own, but we haven't, we've thrown it up for discussion, but we haven't met on it, but it's something we're definitely looking at. But we haven't made, it's still too early to decide, but we are sort of leaning towards doing that at our other buildings and possibly this one.
It would be a point in your favor from my perspective. Is it going to have EV charging?
I believe, Jim, do you want to answer?
We want to have EV charging, yes.
Yeah, I believe it does. I can't remember the exact number, but.
Okay. You said that you'd offer, or our planner said that you had offered the existing businesses to return to the new building. Would that be at the same rent that they're paying now, or would it be way higher?
Well, actually, yes, it would be higher. When we purchased the property, three of the four commercial tenants were there, and we always lay out all our cards on the table, and we were open and frank with them that it was our intention to to develop the properties, and I believe it's it's probably, I don't recall how many years it's been since we assembled these properties, but the tenants that are remaining are from the first purchases is probably at least seven, eight years ago, if not more. But we've been renting this entire time at extremely sub-market, so they're not even paying market rates now. And in fact, the restaurant pleaded with us to open because across the ways, there's, on the other side of the park, it's quite an exciting CRU, streetscape with different businesses, and we're hoping to take that same sort of model and vigor and instate it here, and that's why we've done a lot of different size and widths and depths, but.
Just one more question here. Sorry, I've only got a few minutes.
We do intend to offer all of them to come back.
Okay. Are you going to be getting any federal or provincial help with financing?
For construction, not so. I don't, you know, when it comes to the takeout mortgage, well, we'd have to evaluate at that time because it's quite a few years out, so I wouldn't say, we'll definitely look at it, but whatever makes sense at that time, but it's sort of hard to say with two, three years out.
So, how long would it be before the building is built then?
Well, typically from rezoning to, you know, shovel in the ground, it's your staff would have a better idea, but I think things are running a year or so, and then it's two years of construction, so we're probably realistically three years out from completion.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Swanson. We have councillor Hardwick, Kirby Young, and Fry. Councillor Hardwick.
Great, thank you very much. I'm interested in the commercial space. I'd like to know what kind of businesses you anticipate would be looking at the commercial at grade.
Well, oh, sorry, you can hear me, right? Yes. Retail is really a passion of our company, and we always seek to get as diverse, as many diverse uses as possible, and we think that's already what's happening, you know, at all the CRUs that surround the area, and that's why we've done a lot of new, you know, typically, people would probably put three or four CRUs here, and we've put 11 because we want to create the excitement, different animation, different uses, and more opportunities for, you know, startup businesses. And like the business we put in there on a temp basis, it was intended as a pop-up, but the process has taken so long. Crowbar, they've been there for several years, and we'd love to see them back in, and, you know, even the other ones are warehousing, if they feel it's appropriate to come in, where, you know, we love keeping long-term tenants, but it's important to have a mix, and, you know, from, I would personally love to see, you know, from flower shops to butcher shops, to, you know, cafe, a little restaurant, the more diverse and eclectic the mix, the better.
So, Carrie, you think that's going to be possible and affordable for, you know, mom and pop level or local companies? It's not going to be just for multinational chains? I think that's.
Oh, no, absolutely. There are two reasons for that, primarily because with smaller, with the smaller units, it makes it more affordable, and that's why, you know, we've done it because it's tough to run a business. And a lot of brick-and-mortar businesses, you know, they can have their brick-and-mortar presence, you know, be, you know, of a smaller size, but then also have, you know, online and takeout and online business. But what's really important here, and this is, this is, you know, a bigger discussion, but when we, when the building's built out to the full capacity of the density and the massing, then the property taxes will be less for each CRU because it'll be shared by the residential as well as as well as the commercial tenants. So, you know, tenants, they just look at, they look at their rent from a gross perspective. Of course, for income and development, developer looks at it from the net to see if it's financially viable. But one advantage of redevelopment across the board throughout the city, and certainly here, is that the land value, which is part of the assessment, gets shared by more people and therefore, you know, be more affordable. So, basically, in a nutshell, sharing the taxes with, you know, a fully built-out density and two smaller CRUs. That's why we think it'll be approachable, and we will definitely seek to see some local businesses in there. Oops, I can't hear you.
What I was really looking to hear was that there was a desire to be looking for businesses that were going to be compatible with the neighborhood and that would be, you know, frequented by people all over the immediate area, and if that's what you're saying, that's the direction.
Yeah, I know, absolutely. I mean, we've got Nat's Pizza on Broadway, it's been there for about four decades, right? And we have lots of long-term tenants, and down on Granville Street, we have the comic shop at the Commodore for, you know, a quarter century, so if we can have small business and locals, we, our philosophy is we don't like to see street-level retail be a. We, our philosophy is we don't like to see street level retail be a shopping mall with the street going through it. It's got to be diverse. It's got to be for mom and pops. They can, they can have one or two nationals. But the more the merrier, the more the diverse, the mix, the better for everybody.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have councillor Kirby Young, councillor Fry, councillor Dominado, councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you. I also have a question. I'll direct to the applicant. My question was similar. It was around the CRU. So I'll just expand on that a little bit. And that was just around. Two sort of part question was around the size of the units kind of relative to the area. I know you mentioned you had eleven, you're looking for animation, but just wondering if the size of the CRU lends itself to small business. And also noting that some of my favorite restaurants are across the street from you. Do you see this as sort of complimentary? As you mentioned a butcher, et cetera. Do you see this developing into more of a restaurant type of area? I'm curious to give me thoughts on that.
I, I think it's, I mean, what was there on the corner was a funeral home and of course, that's a needed service. But there's a huge opportunity working with engineering and city planning to activate the plaza. And I personally, I mean, I, our architects and my brother, our entire team, we're quite excited to see potentially a restaurant on the corner. And, and that CRU we've made slightly larger and it could, you know, have an outdoor patio. We see with COVID. These outdoor patios that aren't necessarily, you know, adjacent or budding the storefront. They can be sort of a bit far removed and that's quite a successful model. So we'd be totally open and entirely open to seeing that on the corner. And I mean, I personally love sushi. There could, there could be a mix. I mean, you know, there's insurance, there's. Ground, you know, small dentists, but it's, it. It's, I think it's great when you see on, you know, Fourth Avenue and Broadway and, and a commercial drive. And when you see a mix of, of, you know, basic things like a fish shop, a meat. I, I think all, everything can coexist. So that was sort of our vision with it. And we thought, let's put as many CRUs as we can fit in there, different sizes, different, different, on different planes, different depths. Even the one on the side street could, you know, it could be, you know, a counselling office. It could be a bicycle mechanic, right? So we're really open to anything and our idea was build as many as we can and it'll kind of continue. I mean, the way we see it, it's, it's almost like. I know councillor DiGenova always talks about this and I always get excited about, you know, European piazza. So if we can imagine the park as the piazza and have it wrap around three hundred sixty degrees, because it is an unusual area where many streets intersect. So if we can have multiple CRUs, three hundred sixty all the way around the park, so close to downtown, so close to elementary schools. I, I think the entire area is really exciting and, and we, we've tried to create a, a building here that's going to lend to that vision.
So it sounds like you are, you are focusing on envisioning community serving retail. Fair, fair comment, fair reflection?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Fry then councillor Dominado.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Carrie. And I guess this question for you, your team and, and staff too. I appreciate some of the, the articulations in appendix B around the urban design and, and how the CRU should sort of reflect that granular, narrow storefront and the materials and the planes and the window detailing and that kind of thing. I'm curious about some of the comments from UDP around the expression of the unique sort of Kingsway road geometry and how kind of framing it as a gateway to Mount Pleasant. Where they, where they talked about sort of that angular shift in curvature of Kingsway. So I'm, I'm curious about if, if that's, if how you guys are going to respond to those comments and from UDP. And also how you anticipate sort of programming this sort of parklet space, which is fantastic, by the way.
Well, the, it's Jim Wong here from Studio One. The intent was that because the road is curved, I think we, we were trying to develop a, as amazing here that actually turns with the road so that we don't have a, and have some interest from the corner all the way as the road turns. As you see, when you're driving down that road, because actually I drive down that road every day. It's quite an interesting little site because as you turn the corner, you see a different angle of the building again, right? And, and on the, the reason the parklet portion of this site is that we've been working with engineering to try and figure out what is in the, going to be used, what the parklet's going to be used for. And I think there's been a number of suggestions from engineering and we're still continuing to dialogue with them to figure out what is actually they, they have planned for the area. Because one of the things that they talked about was that it may be, you know, there may be a bike route through portion of that. That's a connection of bike route from this across the street to Kingsway. So we're still in discussions with them on the parklet side of this thing, this development, actually.
So Jim, what do you see to the, the comments in, in appendix D from UDP around the, around that there's more work needed on that, that kind of Kingsway reflection? And obviously I'm not an architect or.
Yeah, we're, we're working through that and, and in our next, when we get through to, if we get past this public hearing, we will develop that in our next go around with the design plan or with the development permit submission. So we've, we've actually started developing that already, actually. That is not in the set that you have, but we have some further development of the ground floor. Articulation and the corner element that's been updated actually now.
Oh, that's great. And so, and, and programming is sort of ownership of the parklet wise, has this become a sort of park board realm? Or is this a quasi-private space? How's it work?
It's, it's city owned property. I believe that the, we are going to, you know, furnish the space and develop it. And then it's handed back to the city for, you know, it's basically city space. It's not part of this development.
But so the, but the landscaping and that.
Landscaping, yes, we are, we're going to develop the landscaping and the developer will be paying for the landscaping portion.
Okay, thanks very much. That's it for me, Mayor. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Councillor Fry, councillor Dominado, then councillor Weave.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a question for the applicant and it might seem a bit unusual, but. Noticed the focus on the rooftop amenities, that's fantastic, including the children's play area and seating. We recently approved a project, or maybe this is a few years ago now, that where there was a play area included and people anticipated there to be play equipment and play space. And what they essentially got was sort of a metal looking cage that was really not play equipment for children. And so I'm curious if you could expand on what people could anticipate having there for children? Is it just an open play space or is there actually play equipment included in that? And I know you're very community minded, but I didn't want to ask that question because it came up recently with another development.
Alyssa, maybe you can feel that Alyssa is our landscape architect, actually, on your project.
Thank you.
Hi there. Alyssa Sinchison with Prospect and Refuge. That, the idea is that, that there's play equipment there. And it's not a big space, so it's not, you know, you can't put sort of a big piece of. Play equipment. It's also, it's hard over top of the roof to put sort of. You know, something that needs big footings or something like that, but we're looking more at sort of a natural play area with, you know, sort of log elements and ground plane elements.
Okay, it sounds like it'd probably be catering to younger children.
Yeah, definitely oriented. You know, what we try to do with these spaces is make them so that they're. You know, if you're like, if you imagine you have a small kid and you want to go up with your coffee because, you know, they want to go and run around, but it's early still, you can sit up on the roof and they can run around, have their coffee. But then it's also like a space that in the evening, when there's adults up there, like maybe they can come in, they can sit on the logs and have a conversation or something like that, you know? So it's kind of a space that, that becomes flexible for a wide range of users throughout the day.
Great. Thank you. That's it for questions.
Thanks so much. Councillor Weave, five minutes.
Yeah, I got two questions. The first one is, is there a shadow study looked like it was done with the original height? Is there any change to the shadowing on the park with the new height proposed in the yellow memo?
No, there's no significant, there's no significant change to the shadow.
So we won't see any shadowing in Robson Park at all?
No.
Okay. Second is on mixed use, recognizing that some of the uses right now are important warehousing, including Geo's restaurant equipment, which supplies most restaurants in the area with equipment. I'm just wondering, was there an opportunity to look at different uses other than just retail, recognizing that there's pretty an eclectic mix of businesses in that space?
I, I think that the area is, as you say, it's very eclectic and, and they, and I say, as Carrie mentioned earlier, right? We're trying to get a variety of uses in here. And it was fully intended to have small units so that you can get that same fabric of the Kingsway storefront, the smaller storefronts and stuff. So I don't know that we've kind of necessarily looked at any industrial uses here or that kind of warehousing type use. And, you know, Carrie, do you have any other comments on that maybe or?
Well, I know, I know with C two, it, you know, it calls for retail at grade, right? And sort of, you know, the, while we do have extra density under the rental housing program, we've, you know, generally the direction is to go to be consistent with C two. So light industrial is, is, you know, or, or is inconsistent with the requirement of having street level retail. But, you know, if he wants to have a showroom. For sure, but generally with all our tenants, we always try to find solutions for them. So we will be talking to them and, and definitely to come back. But if not, we often move tenants. We actually even purchase buildings to put tenants and existing tenants. So what's better than, you know, having a long-term tenant? I mean, it's, it's great to try and find places to continue the relationship. So we have multiple tenants that have been spanning multiple decades and, and we've successfully moved a lot into other buildings and given them more viable, you know, that's basically a viable financial solution for them.
Okay, but I just know that Geo's, Geo's a pretty important piece to the restaurant industry here in Vancouver.
Yeah.
My last one's more to staff. There's a conversation about a proposed bike lane. I'm just wondering where that discussion is at and how that interplays with this building through this process.
Yeah, thanks for the question, councillor. This is Derek Robinson, development planner. So in terms of the, the potential bike infrastructure, that's, that's future. And so there's still a fair bit of work to be done in terms of whether or not that is the alignment that's ultimately chosen. But currently there's a temporary landscape buffer that was, is proposed along Kingsway. And so that is area that could be implemented for a future bike way to connect the Fourteenth Avenue Bike Way and potentially cross Kingsway. But again, you know, alignments need to be worked out and, and really engineering will, will do that work and that's future work.
Okay. And in that buffer, is that recognizing the importance of these urban groves for biodiversity? Is this an opportunity for us to create a little biodiversity hotspot? Or is it looked at more of a multi-use plaza that can benefit the CRUs?
Yeah, thanks for the question. That would be, details would primarily be determined with engineering through the DP stage. But again, just to note that it is intended to be interim if there is future bike infrastructure, right? And furthermore, you know, there will be a servicing agreement and so the, the applicant will be the ones ultimately maintaining this.
They'll be maintaining in perpetuity of the project?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. That's it for questions for the applicant and staff. So we're going to move on to speakers. Clerks, we have one registered speaker for this item. I just wonder if that speaker is on the line?
Mayor, it's the clerk. The speaker is not on the line.
Okay, thank you so much. So we're going to go on our first call for speakers. Anyone who wants to speak to this item, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code seven seven four two zero hashtag. And that number's on Twitter in the live stream. So for the first call clerks, anybody happen to slide in there in that thirty seconds?
No speakers on the line, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Second call then. The number is on the live stream and Twitter. And this is the second call for speakers. Our legal obligation to do so. Councillor, clerks, anybody?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Right. So third and final call, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code seven seven four two zero hashtag. Councillor, it is six forty-five. We'll come back at six fifty to give five minutes for folks to phone in if they're interested in speaking to this item. See you in five. Is on the line?
No additional speakers, mayor.
Thanks very much. So we're going to close the speakers list and, um, uh, right. So we're going to, um, sorry, this script has changed here. Uh, so we're going to close the speakers list and as, as, uh, no public comments are received on this item after 5:00 PM today. We're going to close the receipt of public comments and move on to closing comments. Does the applicant have any closing comments on this item?
Uh, no, no closing comments for us.
Thank you so much. Staff have any closing comments?
Hi, Mary. Yes, we do. Uh, just a reminder, actually, um, just, just that, uh, you have a yellow memo in your rezoning package. And, uh, staff request that you, um, move the motion to adopt the yellow memo for increased height, uh, as well as the recommendations in the report, please. Thank you.
Thanks so much. There are questions. Uh, councillor Kirby Young, give up the five minutes followed by councillor Dejanova.
Thanks, mayor. I was actually on the queue to move the recommendation, the yellow memo, but I can go after councillor Dejanova if she has a question.
Okay, thanks councillor Dejanova. Uh, do you have a question? Up to five minutes? Can't hear you councillor Dejanova? Councillor Dejanova, you have questions up to five minutes? Councillor Dejanova? Okay, the clerks are indicating that councillor Dejanova may not be back yet. So, uh, councillor Kirby Young?
I think you move the recommendations, mayor, with the yellow memos.
Thank you so much. Oh, councillor Dejanova, just before we get a seconder, you are on the queue to ask questions?
Okay, it's, it's been moved. So I'm, I'm okay, mayor. I'll just second it. That's fine.
Okay, so we're going to move to the main queue for debate. Councillor Kirby Young, uh, you can go first if you want because you moved the, the motion.
Yeah, I'll just speak very briefly. It's, um, rental housing, which is great to see and that we need. Um, I think it is a good addition to the area in terms of supporting the existing local business. Um, pleased to see the varying size of the CRUs, um, and the thought that's given in terms of animating the streetscape, um, and the parklet, um, with respect to enhancement of the public realm, which we have all seen as critically important during the pandemic. So 80 new homes under rental 100. And I would note also, um, I think staff had indicated this application came in in July. So coming in under a year from complete, complete application to approval. So hopefully we'll continue to see that, um, that timing decrease as we get more efficient with our permitting processes. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, councillor Swanson, up to five for debate.
Yeah, I went and looked at this site on the weekend and I actually started getting a nice appreciation for Kingsway for the first time as a place where small businesses with low rent can locate and still be where there's lots of potential customers. Um, for this project, um, I'm really worried about the small businesses that are across the streets, the little restaurants, the produce store. I'm worried about the two people, uh, households that are going to be evicted. Um, I am afraid that the businesses that are being evicted will have a higher rent if they return and that might, might not be affordable. This is actually the first rental development that I've asked if it would be pet friendly, where I haven't got a very firm yes. So that's another problem. Um, so I'm, I'm concerned that it will be basically a gentrifying development in a city where we desperately need particularly the lower rent small businesses. And then when you look at the housing that it's, will provide, the, the lowest amount of money you can have to afford a small studio is 62,000. Um, where the average renter household in the city makes 50,000 and a household couldn't live in a studio. So the, there's no element of affordability in this project. And that's basically what I'm after is affordability for renters, tenant, residential renters and affordability for business renters. And it doesn't seem to be in this project. And I'm worried about the impact it will have on reducing affordability for other businesses that are nearby. That's it.
Thank you councillor Swanson. Councillor Dejanova, up to five minutes.
Thanks so much. Well, uh, I, I know I, I can ask questions of the applicant, but you had me at piazza. I think that this is a really exciting project. I'm excited to see what it will be and appreciate that you've been honest about the fact that this needs to move forward for you to be able to realize the potential and, and see what it will be. And, you know, to the points just made by, uh, another councillor, I think that it, it is important. The more, uh, the more revitalization efforts that we see, um, you know, you, it, it was noted before that this, you know, um, what we had before in this area specifically would be sort of a funeral home and funeral services, not saying that we don't need those in Vancouver. But I know, um, just up the street from here is where some of my friends, who are the only millennials that maybe I could convince to stay in Vancouver. It's okay, you can raise a child. They have two in Vancouver on Kingsway, um, are living. And, you know, they love that atmosphere, that streetscape, the fact that, you know, you want to build something that contributes not only to the public realm and hearing from staff and their comments that there is that offer of contribution to the public realm. I think that we have to look at this, you know, outside of the box. More and more people are looking for homes where they have a shared or common space. And that's a public space and an outdoor space, and that is their living room. And for that reason, I'm really excited about this and I wouldn't want to delay it anymore because I think the, the longer we delay this and the less of these we have, you know, to councillor Swanson's point, then it would be gentrification. It wouldn't be affordable. But the more of this that we have moving forward, the more affordable it will be. And I know that and, and that's the reason that I will wholeheartedly support this. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Dejanova. Uh, councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to first say that I have utmost respect for the developer, uh, as, especially as a family at long time, uh, developing in, in Vancouver. But I am concerned, as was, uh, councillor Swanson about gentrification and the precedent setting nature of this, especially at six stories, um, what the impact will be uh, on the character on the other side of the street. And, uh, the questions about affordability are, are sound questions. And to that end, um, this application cites the Housing Vancouver Strategy as a precedent in its policy context on page six of the staff report. In May of, uh, 2020, council approved the recalibrating the Housing Vancouver Strategy post-COVID-19 uh, motion, which directed staff to provide detailed housing data to justify its housing targets. A year later, this data has not been provided. So since this application is based on insufficient information, I have no choice but to abstain from voting. And to be clear, to abstain means not to vote at all. And when is it appropriate to abstain? Well, an example is when a councillor might abstain when she believes there was insufficient information for her to make a decision. I just wanted to be clear about that and that, those are my comments.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Weep, up to five?
Yeah, I will be supportive of the project. I am concerned, um, about the uniqueness of this commercial space and that we don't have a tenancy protection or an ability to create new commercial space like what is there currently. Um, these are some really unique spaces that provide, um, opportunities for other small businesses to thrive. So I think we do need to look at how we can better protect the commercial spaces. Um, I also think we're not capturing enough of the lift here, um, to deliver either affordability or be able to meet the amenity needs of the neighborhood. So I think that we need to continue to look at opportunities to ensure that we're capturing the lift so that we're not raising the property values significantly of the other s- commercial units in this area because it is just becoming a gem, um, for so many of us. And I think that that's something we want to continue. I appreciate the comments from the developer that they're going to do everything they can, um, to fit within the community and get the CPUs that work, um, in small businesses that make it work. Um, but I am concerned that we, um, are working forward with policy that is going to struggle in the future to deliver what we really want. But I will be supportive of this project.
Councillor Bly, up to five?
Thanks very much. Um, mayor, I just wanted to speak in favor of the, of the, um, proposal of the development. Um, and, you know, we as council have a responsibility to balance all of the, um, varying and complex, um, needs and, uh, and pressures in surrounding communities when we look at these developments. And as I look at, um, both the applicant, but also the community, um, at Fraser and Kingsway and heading up Kingsway, you know, I think a lot of these businesses are actually really struggling because there are not enough customers at the end of the day. And, um, you know, it's, it's not really well-served with, um, active transportation, um, multimodal transportation, uh, transit. We know that we need to bring people in in order for more transit to be brought in. So I definitely appreciate the concerns around gentrification, but I think I would be remiss if I didn't comment as somebody who's worked in, um, in, in local business and had my own business for 20 years, um, collectively is that, you know, these are the, these are the very real pressures. And we as a council have a responsibility to, um, enable the right kind of balance and strike a balance around housing, but we cannot, I don't think, make a decision that, um, that if a particular development is going to increase rents, then we should say no to it. I think we have to recognize that it's about, um, a, a, a balanced approach to increasing population at a manageable rate so that these businesses, surrounding businesses and new businesses can thrive. And, and as somebody who, again, has worked in business for a long time, that is the mindset of a business owner. They don't go into business to not grow or to not increase their customers. They go into business to see what they can do. And, uh, for us to make decisions that say, we're afraid your rent might be higher. They'll say, well, bring me more customers and I can afford to pay more rent. Um, and so I'll, I'll leave it there, but I, I just think there's just been some clear comments here. And we know that this particular applicant has, um, is, uh, been and raised, working in and raised in Vancouver for, for their whole life as a family business. And I think they've got the best intentions at heart here. So, uh, I'm happy to support this development. I look forward to seeing it come to life. Thanks.
Thanks so much. Uh, that's it for, uh, speakers to this item. Thank you, council. And, uh, so, yeah, so we'll go to the vote. Councillor Carr, councillor Dejanova? Councillor Carr, do you need a vote assist? Councillor, councillor Carr, do you need a vote assist? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Uh, that has passed with councillor Swanson in opposition. Thank you, council. And, uh, we're moving on to our next item. Item number two is, uh, rezoning on 8725 French Street. And I'll just ask again, on, on, as I do with each item, anybody want to declare a conflict of interest on that? Uh, please do it now. Otherwise, will the clerk read the application and summary correspondence?
This is an application by Colliers International to rezone 8725 French Street from RM dash three A multiple dwelling residential to CD dash one comprehensive development district to permit the development of a six-story building with 100 social housing units, a height of 21.1 meters, equivalent to 69.3 feet, and a floor space ratio FSR of 2.7 are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. 21 pieces of correspondence in support and three pieces of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thank you very much, clerks. We have, uh, if anybody wants to talk to this item, 1-833-353-8610, code 77420, uh, pound sign to get on the list. And that's on Twitter and the live stream. And we have, uh, Michael Gleene from the rezoning center here. Uh, we do have speakers, council, so I suggest we proceed with the, uh, with the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Uh, you're on the, uh, on the WebEx and I'm just checking the public screen. I'm sure you're there. So, uh, you can proceed anytime you like.
Thank you. So, good evening, mayor and council. My name is Marcel Jeline, rezoning planner for this application at 8725 French Street. The site is located in the Marpole neighborhood on the northwest corner of French Street and West 71st Avenue. The site, including the areas to the north, south, east and west are zoned RM three A, permitting a maximum height of 35 feet and an FSR of 1.0. The built form is predominantly older two and three-story multiple dwellings. Half a block directly west of the site along Granville Street between West 71st and West 72nd avenues. The plan permits the development of apartments with the choice of use that grade up to six stories in height. Comprised of four legal parcels, the site is approximately 23,000 square feet and has a frontage of 200 feet along French Street and a depth of 115 feet along West 71st Avenue. The existing three-story building was constructed in 1964 and has been owned by Brightside Community Homes since 2013 and includes 46 units of housing. At the time of application, there were 39 units occupied. 27 units are non-market tenancies which began under Brightside and 12 units are legacy tenancies that had begun under the previous ownership and continue to pay market rental rates. All existing tenants are covered by the city's tenant relocation protection policy. The site is within a 15-minute walk of seven parks, five childcare providers, Marpole Public Library, neighborhood house and rapid transit. Commercial services exist five minutes away on Granville Street. The site is located in the catchment area of David, David Lloyd George Elementary and Sir Winston Churchill Secondary. The Marpole Plan supports an increase of housing options for vulnerable community residents as well as the amount of housing over the life of the plan. Rezonings are permitted for social housing projects under the plan to renew and increase the stock of social housing. This proposal is to rezone the site from RM three A to CD one for a six-story residential building with 100 units of social housing for seniors, families and those living with disabilities. The proposed unit mix includes 29 studio, 47 one-bed, 14 two-bed and 10 three-bed units. 24% of the units are family units and 20% of the units overall are designed to be wheelchair accessible. Staff support the, the mix proposed as Brightside provides homes primarily to seniors, but is currently expanding its portfolio to include more family units. A floor area of approximately 62,000 square feet, density of 2.7 FSR and height of 69.3 feet are recommended, including a slight increase in FSR and floor area to ensure the minimum unit size of the studio, studio units is met. One level of underground parking is proposed, including 26 vehicle and 214 bicycle spaces. The applicant is also pursuing passive house certification. This application was submitted to staff for review on November 4th, 2020, under the SHORT program. It's taken seven and a half months to bring to public hearing. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute to approximately 350 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. this project will contribute to approximately 350 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. With respect to form of development, the proposal responds to the existing and future context of the, of the area as well as urban design directions in the plan. The sixth floor south side is substantially set back to make for a smoother transition to the currently lower height apartments to the south. To mitigate appearance of excessive building width, there is a slight change in materials and framing elements around the building's center point. Additionally, across the lane to the west, under the Marpole Plan, the building form is permitted to reach six stories. The project meets the city's definition of social housing with a minimum of 30% of the units rented to households with incomes under the BC housing income limits levels, secured with the housing agreement for 60 years or the life of the building. The table on the right includes the rent and corresponding household income level for the hills units. Thirty-nine of the units were tenanted at the time of application, including 27 non-market and 12 legacy tenants. Most recently, 32 tenants remain on site. Current rent ranges from 475 to 1325 per month. The applicant has maintained regular contact with all onsite tenants, including two tenant meetings that the city attended. Communication with tenants throughout the application process has included individual interviews, meetings and drop-in hours. All tenants are covered by the tenant relocation plan for non-market housing, including securing a permanent rehousing option within Brightside's housing portfolio or alternative housing options, maintaining affordability for existing residents, providing support for relocation and special circumstances, including moving expense and compensation. Ongoing communication and engagement with tenants and the right of first refusal, specifically all current tenants may return to the completed building at existing rents based on income qualification. Further, the applicant is working directly with each legacy tenant who has resided on site prior to 2013 to support relocation needs. Approximately 29 people attended the pre-application open house. The city-led virtual open house was held from January 11th to January 31st, 2021. 172 unique visitors reviewed the Shape Your City webpage, 72 reviewed multiple documents and 23 engaged individuals submitted comment forums and questions. Thirty-four submissions were received, including 21 comment forums, 11 questions and two other pieces of input collected via email and telephone. Key themes of support included the provision of affordable housing, building height, density and massing in building design. Key themes of concern included building heights as well as the existing tenants on site and affordability. Building height and density. Members of the public raised concerns the proposed density and height is out of scale and proportion generally in the neighborhood and with neighboring three-story buildings. The plan states rezoning of sites will be considered to renew and increase social housing. Design conditions are provided in Appendix B to assist with the transition of the proposed development into the neighborhood context. Existing tenants and affordability. Eligible residents and projects undergoing redevelopment are covered by the city's tenant relocation and protection policy. The applicable TRP requirements are determined by the type of development being constructed. As the site will be redeveloped as social housing, the non-market housing framework for, for tenant relocation applies. Both non-market and legacy tenants will be offered financial compensation and support in finding alternative housing. Tenants will also be offered the right of first refusal to return, provided that they meet Brightside's application and social housing income testing requirements. In summary, staff recommends approval of this application to rezone eight, seven, two, five French Street from RM three A to CD one, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B, as it meets the intent of the Marpole Community Plan with respect to the delivery of social housing. If approved, the application would contribute 100 new social housing units to help reach the city's goals identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Staff and applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your presentation. We do have speakers counsel, but we're gonna see if the applicant is here to speak to the application.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can. Whatever you like. If you like to answer questions or make a presentation, it's up to you.
Yeah, I'll just say a few words. Yeah, so thanks for having us and considering this rezoning. I'm William Azaroff, CEO of Brightside Community Homes Foundation. And yeah, so this is, as you may recall, this is our fourth rezoning application appearing before you in the last 12 months. And these four projects reflect a combined new 485 secured rental homes, of which 282 are net new homes for renters in the city of Vancouver, so we're quite excited about that. This will bring the total of homes that Brightside operates to 1,220 across 25 buildings. So it'll increase Brightside's capacity to provide affordable rental homes in North America's least affordable city. And just two things I wanted to point out that I'm super excited about this particular redevelopment. One is this redevelopment is situated on the traditional and ancestral territory of the Musqueam people on what was once the large Musqueam village site of Sesnom. And so we want to recognize and honor the culture and history of the Musqueam people. I've, I've been talking to the Musqueam since February of 2020, have spoken to chief and council, and I look forward to working with them to find ways to honor their history in whatever way that is suitable to all of us. But I think there's some good possibilities happening, so I'm very excited about that, about the continuing engagement with the Musqueam and Indian band. And second is, as Marcel mentioned, the passive house of our four projects, three are passive house standards, which obviously is lower emissions and a lower carbon footprint. But it also improves comfort and lowers costs for the future residents of this redevelopment. So with that, I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you so much for that. And now I'm going to move to counsel. Counsel, any questions to staff or the applicant? Now's the time to ask. Counselor Hardwick, we have you up first. Up to five minutes for questions.
Thank you. Well, my questions revolve around the definition of social housing. And in this case, when we're talking about 100% social housing, are we talking about 70% market rentals in this building?
Hi, Counselor Hardwick. So, no, not market units. So in order to make the project viable, we're applying for CMHC co-investment fund. You know, we will start having to pay property tax on this property. We haven't had to pay that in the past, but after redevelopment, we will. And this project isn't eligible for chip grant because chip grants are really mostly geared towards projects that get CHF funding from BC housing. So we're doing everything we can to make the market units, quote unquote, as affordable as possible, but they'll be considerably below what a market developer would, would have. So we will charge what it takes to make the project break even, but no profit.
Didn't really answer my question. So if we're looking, here's 100% of the building, 100% of the units. We know that 30% are going to be hills or certainly within our affordable definition. So what does that do to the other 70%? Have you got a gradation between it? Can you, on that basis, and it's great that you're able to access some of these other grants and, and you know, that you're going to be paying property tax, but I still would like to understand the breakdown percentage-wise of the different gradients of rents.
So 30% will be considerably below hills, considering people are coming back and paying as low as 475. So the 30% aren't just at hills, they're considerably below hills. And then the rest of 70%, it won't be a gradation, there'll be, you know, again, I can't, until we have final financing costs and construction costs, we will charge as little as we can to make the project break even. But I can't give any more specifics than that until we know our final costs.
Other than they would be under the city's definition of social or affordable housing, which is the kind of amazing spectrum from 30,000 to 80,000 salary a year?
Yeah, I mean, our mission, our mission is to create as much affordability as we can. So the city's definition gives us the upper limit, but that's not what our goal is by any means.
And what is the relationship with Colliers? When I think of Colliers, I think of dealing with, with high-end, not nonprofit housing. What's the nature of the relationship?
So Colliers does a lot of work as development managers for not-for-profits and churches. So a group like Brightside is small enough that we don't have a development arm in-house. So we work with different development consultants, so Colliers is doing two or four redevelopments and they're our development manager on this project.
Great. Thanks for answering my questions.
Thank you.
Counselor Swanson up to five.
Yeah, would this be a pet-friendly building?
So I hope so. I can't give you a firm answer because of the four redevelopments, some will definitely be, if not all, pet-friendly, but we haven't determined the specifics of which of the buildings will be and which won't be, but that is our goal.
Okay, and will you have EV charging?
Yeah, we will. We don't know exactly how many units, but we're moving towards EV charging. I mean, it somewhat depends on, again, the affordability and how many we can afford to install.
Have you got a plan for where the current residents can go?
Yes, we do. So we've been working individually with the residents and most of them are moving within our portfolio. As we've done with our other buildings, that's one of the reasons why we start redevelopment, or sorry, relocation so early, is that we give people the chance to look at other suites in our portfolio and move. When the project is complete, they can stay put if they like their new unit and don't want to move again, or they're welcome back into this building at maintaining their current rents. The legacy tenants, we're working with individually. Again, our goal is to keep them housed because we know they're paying substantially below what the market will bear and working with them individually to try and keep them, again, in Brightside's portfolio. But if that's not what they want, then we're working with them individually to, to find a solution that's mutually beneficial.
Okay, and the last question, it says in the staff report that it's your intention to apply for the BC government program that would enable you to have 20% at shelter, 50 at hills and 30 at market. Is that correct?
It is. And when CHF was announced last week, the week before, this project did not get CHF funding. So of our four projects, two got CHF and two did not. So sort of speaks to the different kinds of funding streams that need to be accessed for different projects.
So do you think that you'll be able to do much beyond just the 30% at hills and 70% at market?
I don't.
Of affordability?
Yeah, I think, I think because of the deep affordability of the 30%, I don't know that the percentage will change. If it can, it will. I think what we're focused on is how inexpensive can we make the 70% of units? But we, I think we all know that buildings owned by not-for-profits become more affordable, not less affordable over time. That's actually been proven with other buildings that we've bought, so compare around them. You know, we're not maximizing profit, we're looking at a break-even model. So I believe they'll become more affordable. I know they'll, they'll become more affordable over time. But exactly what that makeup is as far as the low-end of market units, you know, like all the projects.
More affordable in terms of being able to have more tenants with lower incomes.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
And especially compared to the market. No, thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you. We're on to Counselor Boyle. Up to five minutes for questions.
Thanks so much. I just have one question and maybe it's a question for the applicant, it might be for city staff, but I'm hoping someone can help me understand. It, it seems to me that this project would fall under the new, newly approved regulations from council that up to six stories of social housing in certain districts wouldn't require a rezoning. And so I'm just curious why this project at six stories is coming for public hearing after we passed those guidelines.
I'm happy to address that, but Marcel, do you want to take that?
Sure, I can. It's Marcel Jaline, rezoning planner. So thanks, Counselor Boiler, Boyle for the question. Under the, the new DP, the maximum building height is 65 feet. And as this application proposes is, it's closer to 70 feet. So it doesn't meet the height requirement or limit under the new district schedule. The 65 feet is actually the maximum height allowable, approved up from 35 feet. So that's the reason why it wouldn't go through the, the new district schedule. But the applicant does, I mean, there is the option moving forward. If they don't enact, they could modify the design of the building to go back through the DP process if they, if they choose to do so.
Okay, okay, I appreciate knowing that. So my follow-up question to the applicant, and sorry if this was said in the presentation and I, I was listening for other things and missed it. Can you remind us or give us a sense of how long this rezoning process has taken for this project?
Yeah, maybe.
Either one.
For when the rezoning application was submitted to staff, it is seven and a half months to public hearing.
Okay, and to the applicant, do you have a sense of, of the kind of added cost to this project for that process?
Yeah, I think we, we pulled numbers on a couple of projects and I can't remember which was which, but they're both in the, in the 250,000 to, I believe, $400,000 range. So I can't remember if this was at the high end or the low end of that. But yeah, if we'd been, if, if the policy had been in place when we started the project, we could have saved that much and accepted that, yeah, one end of the building is slightly over height. So in the case of the, the policy, we actually wouldn't qualify. We'd have to go through either get an exemption from staff, which wasn't possible in this case, or go through a rezoning application.
For that extra five feet. Okay, I think those are all of my questions. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby Young up to five.
Yeah, thanks. I have a couple of questions picking up on that. It's picking up on that discussion with respect to where you fell and I know you came in under the short program and now there's the expedited for six stories. Was that five feet important to you? Would you have actually, if that policy had been in place, changed your design to not have that?
I can take that one, William, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Yep. So just on the design frame, yeah, we did look at kind of essentially squishing the building by five feet. Sorry, just the development manager here, just, just speaking for Brightside. But so we did look at, at squishing the building five feet and unfortunately, you know, it wouldn't be possible for a number of reasons. You know, livability being one of them for the, for the future residents. And so we did kind of explore all options because there is obviously a, a time benefit going right to DP. But ultimately, we just chose to stick with the rezoning. If we, you know, if the policy would have passed a number of months ago, we probably would have had a bit more time to kind of make some of the changes. But kind of the, the timing of when the policy came into place and kind of where this project was in the approval stream, it, it makes sense to continue on with the rezoning as per status quo.
Right, because you're vested in that process. You've also invested in the design too.
Correct, yeah. And, and staff has been supportive and collaborative the entire time. And so we have, we have achieved a number of, of time savings through the short program, getting us to this point. And so we're going to continue on with, with the status quo process that we've been working with.
Okay, now I appreciate the insight. Picking up also on with respect to the affordability discussion. I wonder if you can comment, when you said you're endeavoring to have those remaining 70% of units be as affordable as possible, of how, who qualifies and how do people qualify? What process is in place in terms of who can sort of secure one of those units and get to live in one?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, right now, almost our entire portfolio is rent geared to income, which includes annual or biannual income reviews. For these kind of low-end of market or, you know, these non-RGI units, we will do some kind of income testing when people move in to make sure that truly they're, they're still paying about 30% of their income. And, you know, this isn't a burden on them, nor are they taking advantage of a suite like this and earning quite a lot of money, or at least more money than, than this suite would be geared for. After that, we, because they're not an RGI resident, we likely, we haven't come up with all the policies on this yet because we haven't had this in the past. But we will probably not do annual testing. We will just do it when they move in and leave it at that to make sure that this is indeed an affordable unit at their income level and appropriate.
So that, that was just to follow up on that. That was to me one of my questions. So it's just initially at income, but if somebody's circumstances improve over time and they do have more income, you could conceivably have somebody then in a unit that is already more than somebody else that might need that unit more at that rate.
Yeah, it's one of the things we're, we're looking, again, not a problem we face today, but with the redevelopments, the way to make them sort of pencil out is the way to make them sort of pencil out is these non-RGI residents. So we haven't come up with a full leasing agreement, but that's one of the pitfalls that we're definitely looking at. That's not our model is to, to have people sort of quote, "take advantage of the system." So I can't tell you exactly how we're going to work that out because we still have a couple of years until these buildings come online. But yeah, what you're pointing to.
Just because I have limited time, can I ask why you chose to only do that initially moving in our application and not to do, say, for example, like you said, RGI, or income testing?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, these units are, you know, our RGI units are main model. The rents can float depending on the needs of the resident. These ones, we need to secure them at a certain rental level in order to make the building break even. So it is just a different model around why the rents are geared to a certain way as opposed to sort of tailor-fit for the resident. So again, it's something we're, we're hammering out policy-wise because it is, like I said, a different model.
Interesting. Okay, I'll reserve comments sort of until later, but thank you. I appreciate the perspective. That's really helpful.
Thanks. Counselor Carr up to five minutes for the applicant or staff.
Great, thank you. I have questions for both the applicant and staff. I'll start with the applicant. I have two questions. My first question is really a follow-up around some of the questioning, I think of, oh, I can't remember which counselor, probably Thompson, and that is around the units of affordability. And it was stated that 30% are going to be well below Hills until final funding is in place. And it, it seemed to me that your answer indicated that perhaps you have not yet received or won't receive the BC Housing, Community Housing funding. Could you just clarify that?
I can take that, William. So, so yeah, you're correct. We did apply for, proceed, where this project did apply for CHF. It unfortunately was not successful, like many great projects have lost over the mainland. You know, there's more projects than there was funding. And so the financing stream that we're targeting now is the co-investment financing stream. And so that's with CMHC. That's why you, you know, you see things like 20% of the units are accessible because that's a CMHC requirement. Unfortunately, due to the timing of that, we can't actually apply for financing until fourth reading. And so, and so right now, we're, you know, the project is only able to make commitments per the policy, you know, for the city of Vancouver. And so we are committing to 30% of the units being at or below Hills. Obviously, those are rent geared to income units, and so not everyone's going to make $55,000 for those studios in months. And so whatever the income based on, on eligibility requirements that those folks will make, that's what they will pay. And then, you know, there is a grant component from co-investment. We obviously haven't applied for co-investment, so we can't call, like, we can't confirm what the grant amount would be, nor that this project is even, you know, approvable because it's kind of, it happens so much further down the line. But as William said, you know, should there be additional forms of, of grants, you know, that the city could provide or that CMHC could provide, that will be added back into the affordability because this project does have a break-even model for, for, from a cash flow perspective. Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, this project's not eligible for the chip grant from the city of Vancouver. And I know if that was the case, then this project could likely provide a bit more affordability. You know, but we don't really have anything other than CMHC, so making commitments that we can make today.
Thank you. Appreciate your, your detailed response on that to help us all understand the challenges around increasing affordability. Thank you.
Great question.
Is related to the fact that this, the report states that there'll be 214 bicycle spaces. And what we also know from the report is there will be 100 social housing units for seniors and families with people with disabilities. So what about your experience in other of your projects or anticipating, anticipating this project? 214 bicycle spaces, are those for family members, visitors? I mean, I'm just, you know, I, I'm just very, I'm interested very much if it was that a requirement or is that based on your experience, an actual desirable, a desirable feature of this housing?
It's a great question. Obviously, bicycle usage is increasing significantly and has over the last number of years. The reason that we're providing 214 is obviously is, is to meet the traffic demand measures for the, for the, from the city's policy. To keep this project viable, you know, we needed to provide enough car parking to satisfy only allowing for one level of underground parking. Having to go two levels, you know, would make this project unviable from a construction cost perspective. And so we're meeting all the city policies using the traffic demand measures and then increasing our, our bike parking requirements, which, you know, we haven't delineated between which ones are for visitors and which ones are for this unit or that. But there will be more than enough for, for any unit, for any bicycles that they have. It's really exciting.
Okay, that's great too. And I can see the use for visitors. Thank you. And to staff, one question, and that is regarding the, the fact that this is the first time I've seen in a staff report on a referral report that talks about the goal being a break-even in terms of the, the financing or the, I guess really the revenue from rents, et cetera, in terms of a social housing project and specifying that there's no profit. Is this, is this something new that you are including just to make it very clear for council in terms of the financial operating, operational mandate of a nonprofit?
Is that for the applicants or for?
No, it was for, no, it was for staff. Thank you.
Thanks, counselor. I'll hand that over to our housing team to answer that question.
Thanks, Marcelle. It's Andy Mogulas, senior housing planner with TDS. Thanks for the question. I think really it's what you've explained and summarized. It's a way to just clarify that social housing projects are nonprofit and have no profit generated and that the minimum affordability requirements that the city has for social housing projects are really the minimum requirements to, to break even effectively for those projects so that the rents on the door effectively finance the cost of construction. And as the applicant has clarified, any other financing from senior levels of government really served to deepen that level of affordability. And so the, the, I don't want to say the hope, but the, the goal is always that beyond that minimum level of affordability, nonprofit housing providers are able to seize those opportunities of funding and financing from senior levels of government to deepen that affordability over time.
I hope that clarity. No, that explains it. It's just, it was new language that I've seen in your report. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's it for questions in this round. We're going to move to hearing from speakers, and there's a few speakers, counsel. The first speaker is, Speaker One's withdrawn, so we have Mark White, speaker number two. It's Mark White on the line.
Yes, yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Sure can. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay, so I actually have been in contact with the new 15 members of the seniors advisory committee. And they've given me permission to speak to this item in that regard. We are very supportive of this project. But we have a, and part of that is that 29 residents at MacLeod currently are seniors, are people over 50 years old. And we, we understand that they have been given the guarantee of being able to be offered one of the rent income on the return, if they choose to return. We do have some suggestions. And, and in, in listening to the discussion of some of the counselors, I would like to make the suggestion around, one, two, exploration around why they have lost their tax exemption status for the redevelopment process if they're operating as a nonprofit. The other is, I think if there was CHP program through the city that could offer greater affordability, even if they don't have BC housing support, I would really like there to be some discussion, not necessarily related directly to this, but in the future, about what the impact could potentially be on increasing affordability if they were eligible for CHP in the future. And that's my, my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I don't see any counselors on the queue for questions, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. Thank you again for participating tonight and your dedication to our organization. Counsel, the next speaker is Jill Atkey.
Hi there. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Jill Atkey and I'm the CEO of BC Nonprofit Housing Association, and I'm also a resident of Vancouver. I'm speaking this evening in support of the rezoning application put forward by Brightside for 8725 French Street. As you all know, more than half of Vancouver households are renters and a quarter of them are spending more than 50% of their pre-tax income on rent. And what that means is that they're likely foregoing other basic necessities and are at risk of homelessness. And unlike homeowners, market rental homes become less affordable over time. And, and so they, they're quickly escaping the reach, rents are quickly escaping the reach of many, many residents in Vancouver. Marple is just one of many Vancouver communities experiencing a rapid erosion of the affordability that does exist there. Nonprofits are finding ways to address this growing need for affordable housing with a pretty limited land base. In the case of Brightside's French Street project, this means increasing the number of homes from 46 to 100. So that's more than doubling the number of homes currently on, on the site. The homes by themselves are not going to solve a, a housing affordability crisis, but they will make a difference for 100 individuals and families at move-in and hundreds more over the course of the, the building's life. Redevelopments, as we all know, are really disruptive. They're difficult for existing residents and Brightside recognizes how difficult the process is. And they have committed to ensuring that residents can return into brand-new, many-accessible units at completion. Brightside has a long track record of providing affordable housing in Vancouver. They're committed, as you've heard from the applicant this evening, to keeping rents affordable while also maintaining good assets. And I think you can see that in, that, you can see the evidence of that in the buildings in their portfolio, including this one where they have internally subsidized the rents in the absence of government subsidy. So this, as we heard this evening already, includes rents as low as $475 a month with no government subsidy. I think if anything, that demonstrates a real commitment to affordability. And for groups like Brightside as well as other nonprofits, the return on investment is actually affordable housing. So finally, Brightside is pursuing passive house certification, as you also heard this evening, for this building, which will help the city meet its climate goals as well. The nonprofit housing sector in BC is the 11th largest consumer of energy in the province. And projects like this will help us reduce our overall footprint in the, in the city, but in the broader sector as well. So I'm happy to add the name of BC Nonprofit Housing Association to the list of support for this project. And thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so much for calling in, and I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. Thanks again. We have Diane Guyen.
Hi, hi, my name is Diane Nguyen, and I'm just calling on behalf of my father, who is Van Hui Nguyen. And he basically is to be supportive of this rezoning. And I was with him from the beginning till the end with the process. And he just wanted to let everyone know that it was really great. It was like, we have an awesome team that, that helped us. Basically, they listened to like his needs, his concerns, everything that he needed an answer for. Everything was answered, obviously. And he just at the end, very, very, very happy with, with everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We don't have any questions for you, but just wanted to thank you for participating tonight. Thank you so much. Kind of move on to the next speaker. We have counsel, the next speaker is Stephen Beatty. Stephen Beatty.
Mayor, that speaker is not on the line.
Thanks. How about our last speaker, speaker number six, Hassan Ben Saina?
Good evening, everybody.
Hi there. Thanks very much for calling in. Up to, up to five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having time for me. So I was just to say, I'm totally with pushing this project to go to actually here in Marple area. Like everybody knows, like we have like a crisis, like problem houses here in Vancouver, actually, especially with the social housing, actually. The family of Turkey that's right here, the Marple area needs a lot of housing like that was actually to be managed to do. We've been supported all the time from the, the location, like the team, team. And like a bright, bright side team. Yeah, and that's everything.
Hey, thank you so much for calling in this evening. Really appreciate your participation. There are no questions for you from counsel. So well, again, just thank you for your time tonight. And counsel, I'm going to do my first call as we're at the end of the speakers list. It's 1-833-353-8610, hashtag to participate. That's on Twitter, on livestream. And clerks, do we have anyone on the line for the first call?
No additional speakers, mayor.
Thank you, clerks. Now I'm going to do the ridiculous second call, which is a, a second call for speakers. 1-833-353-8610, participant code 77420 pound. And is anybody out there after 30 seconds?
No additional speakers, mayor.
Hey, third call. Numbers are on Twitter, livestream. Counsel, it is 7:47. We will come back at 7:52 to move to debate and decision. Thanks so much. We'll see you shortly. debate and decision. Thanks so much. We'll see you shortly.
Speaker five is on the line, Mayor.
Great. Thanks so much. Um, just kind of look up your name here. If you could just state your name, uh, and then you have up to five minutes.
My name is Stephen Beatty.
Hi there. Uh, thanks for calling in.
Can I go ahead?
Please do.
I'm calling about, yeah, and do I just tell you what my thoughts are?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, uh, my brother has lived at that project for twenty-two years. He was the, he's sixty-five now. He was the paper boy there when he was eleven, so he's known in the neighbourhood as the Mayor of Marple. And, uh, Brightside purchased that property, I think it was about six years ago. And then David sadly was diagnosed with Parkinson's. And then they have been saints and have assisted him in reducing his rent. They have also assisted him in finding a new location through myself, helping him as his brother that was guiding him through the, the channels. Uh, Ahmed and Lum Lum and the team at Brightside have been absolutely amazing. They placed him, I requested him to end up in Carisdale because we grew up in Marple and Carisdale area, went to school at McPhee. So they placed him in a beautiful building called The Londonary, which is another project that they own. They paid for all his transfer papers to move him to that location. They transferred all his cable, they made it seamless. And at the same time, they've given him a first refusal on coming back to that property at MacLeod Manor when the project is built. And I strongly advise that you continue with that because he would then still be, even though it's a brand-new building, he would pay the same rent that he is now paying. So they, they honor that. They will repay to move him back in there, so there's no cost endured to him. And having said that he has Parkinson's, this is a blessing in disguise. So I, I, I've met with their team, I've worked with them for the last six months on this transfer of location and I, I couldn't be happier. I couldn't feel, my brother's now safe. He just went to his doctor out at U B C, Dr. Nygaard, who's a state-of-the-art, uh, gentleman that deals, doctor that deals with Parkinson's. And he says David's whole demeanor is positivity. Life has changed. So, I, 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 uh, this, pardon me.
Just take your time. There's no, no hurry.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to say that, uh, they're doing the right thing.
Thank you so much. Did you have anything else to add?
Yeah. Yeah, when I, when, yeah, uh, I just, I feel very, uh, safe for my brother. Pardon me.
Oh, please, just take your time. It's, it's fine. You know, it's, it's important. Uh, what you're saying is important.
So they have about twenty-two of these projects around town, I believe, and I, I totally, uh, praise them for their expedience in helping them, their guidance, their direction. And I think it would be a shame if this project didn't get to come back to Marple. Because the buildings in Marple are tired, the community is tired. And I think by bringing new life to that neighbourhood and offering people like David an opportunity to pay a subsidized rent to move in there is just beyond belief. And, uh, you know, you, you, you see other people that didn't have myself as a brother backing them up, but got, working with people like Brightside, he would be a guy on the street corner. And, so, hundred percent. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. You're a great brother. Really appreciate you calling in tonight.
I appreciate that. Thanks, thanks for your time.
Okay.
No, I, I'm, is anybody got a question for me or is that not part of the deal?
No, it is, but there, uh, we, there are no questions on the queue right now, so that's, uh, but we've all heard you and, uh, appreciate you, uh, what you've had to say.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day and keep doing what you're doing.
Thanks very much.
God, Godspeed. Bye.
Thanks. Uh, clerks, do we have anybody else on the line?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Thanks very much. Uh, so we're going to close the speakers list now, council. Uh, we, uh, we're also going to, uh, close the receipt of additional public comments. Uh, and, um, since we've, uh, haven't received much after five P M. today, so just going to ask the applicant if they have any closing comments.
Uh, we don't. Thank you very much for considering this.
Thanks very much. Staff, have any closing comments?
No closing comments, thank you.
Okay, in triplicate, uh, councillor Dejanova, uh, do you have questions?
See, no one else on the queue. I don't have questions. I was prepared to move, move, um, motion with the recommendations if that wasn't too presumptive.
No, no, great. I heard councillor Boyle second, so I'm going to move to the main queue. Councillor Dejanova, you've moved. So you have up to five minutes, uh, to debate this item.
I'll just be very brief in saying that, uh, that thank you to Brightside Homes. And I understand sometimes the maze of, of moving through that the applicant, in fact, is Colliers International, but they're representing you, uh, because you don't have a development harm. And in, in my experience working in, in non-market housing and looking to house vulnerable people, um, I think that it really is important that you use every resource that you can. Um, you know, it's disheartening to me when we talk about, and I've asked this question many times, tax exemptions. Some land that's owned is tax-exempt if it's owned by a nonprofit. Uh, that being said, there's limitations on that. Uh, and in particular, when we look at cross-subsidization, sometimes that offers even more limitations on that. And I'd hope that that's something in a policy piece that maybe we would look at as a council. I understand that staff are considering that right now and working on it. Uh, but I do, I do really appreciate, uh, the work that Brightside has done to get to this point and, and to look at, at offering subsidized rents to those who most need them and can't afford market rent in the city of Vancouver, especially seniors. The people who helped to build our city. Um, I think that, you know, there's nothing more I can say that the last speaker said so perfectly in giving, uh, a, you know, a testimony of their own experience with Brightside through a family member. And I just think that that, to me, um, I, I already was very impressed by the quality of not only the report here and the recommendations, um, but moving forward, looking at, you know, Brightside and, and providing hundreds of homes to people, um, who, who are most in need. Um, but I, I think that that testimony that was just shared, uh, with us, uh, from the brother of a client of Brightside, you know, it really, it really struck me as, uh, why we need to just be moving this forward. So I wholeheartedly support this and, uh, hope that if there's anything more, uh, that, that the city of Vancouver can do. I understand that this isn't receiving a chip grant, uh, C H F, it's, it's difficult. I'm sure Brightside has other projects that are being funded through that. Uh, but with a nonprofit, I know you can have fifteen auto applications in C, C H F at a time. And, uh, really appreciate, uh, that, you know, the persistence of, of Brightside to continue on in the city of Vancouver. So happy to support this. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, councillor Boyle, followed by councillor Kirby Young, councillor Carr. Councillor Boyle.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm, I'm also, uh, very, very happy to support this. Um, and, uh, and we'll just echo a thanks to, um, Brightside as well as to the speakers, uh, hearing Stephen Beatty speak about his brother and the, um, the support provided, um, by the Brightside team over all of these years, I think is such a powerful testament to the important role that the nonprofit housing sector plays in our city and the, uh, the way that it is, uh, um, uh, and Brightside in particular, as we heard, going above and beyond in really supporting tenants and striving to meet as deep of affordability as possible far, uh, uh, beyond, um, just the, the minimum that the city requires as part of their mission to, uh, be providing housing, uh, and supports for folks who need it. So just really, um, really moved by both of those testimonials, um, from Stephen Beatty as well as from Diane Nguyen and, um, appreciate the work that the Brightside team are doing to meet this important need and, uh, and glad, very glad to support this project. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thank you. Um, happy to see this project coming forward. Um, and it's always a pleasure to get a project from Brightside because we typically will hear, um, from, directly from individuals that are impacted by specific projects. And I think we heard a lot of them later there. Um, on a personal note, it really reminds us, I think, that fundamentally, these, these are homes, and that's a very personal thing. Having lost my grandmother to Parkinson's, um, had that personal experience of what it's like when somebody is suffering with some, such a challenge. Um, and the stressors, if there are others that they have to deal with, those can be alleviated. Makes such a tremendous difference to somebody who is living with that challenge. Um, and having just lost my grandmother's daughter, or my aunt, ten days ago, also senior. But I think to the gentleman that spoke at the end with his brother, I really identify with the impact that it has with respects to ensuring that stability, peace of mind for, for housing, which is really fundamental, I think, um, for people at that stage. So I just wanted to really honour and appreciate that gentleman for sharing his experience. And it's not always easy to talk about, but it really does remind us all why we bring these projects forward. Um, so I'm pleased to support it and pleased at the work of Brightside, and I know they're going to do their best to deepen affordability. There is one thing that stands out to me from a policy perspective that I think is really highlighted in this application, and that is the notion of, as council has been having a lot of debate over, what is social housing in this remaining seventy percent that can be at market? Um, and it was informative to hear that the income testing will only apply, um, up to the applicant when they first go into that unit. Um, and that does sometimes lead to other discussions we've had about people potentially throughout the lifespan of living in a building and becoming overhoused. Certainly, it adds rental units, which is really important. They have solid nonprofit operators with a track record who do their best to deepen affordability, which is really important. Um, but it can also lead in with the current statutory definition of social housing, they were dealing with them, having those practices in, in place of having people that are overhoused relative to other need doesn't necessarily mean as easy answers to that. Um, and I recognize that, but it certainly, um, does raise a kind of a compelling piece to consider from a perspective. I think it also really highlights how difficult it is to build affordable units and housing units and the fact that, and we've counseled, discussed this on a number of occasions, the definition of social housing is really changing without the senior government, um, investment in affordability. It is requiring the market support to get to that quote-unquote break-even. Um, in this case, sort of really covering costs and allowing the building to operate and function and deliver on its, by that monthly financial obligations, um, in terms of maintenance operating and, and sort of the, the financing and mortgage around a project. So, um, it's an informative one. I'm happy to support it for all those reasons, but I think there's some real takeaways here for councils with respect to sort of the, are the right people going to be housed long-term in the right units from an overall affordability perspective in the city? And is it the people with the greatest need that are going to, to land in those? Um, or is it people that are going to land in them and they're going to get that benefit, um, over a longer period of time, even when their circumstances might improve? So that's sort of a good philosophical takeaway question, but I will support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Carr and councillor Hardwick. Councillor Carr.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Mayor, I'm also going to speak strongly in support and want to thank staff and the applicant, as well as the speakers, for, um, uh, for their contributions to this, uh, public hearing tonight and this project. Um, and obviously, um, this is in line with the Marple Plan. There is strong public support as we see evidenced, um, in the report on public input. It doubles the amount of social housing as on-site and, um, seniors, people, families, people with disabilities. Um, and plus it's a passive house standard, which is like a real bonus in this. Um, I, I just want to also echo fellow councillors in saying the commitment of Brightside to deepen affordability is so very much appreciated in the city. And, um, uh, and also their commitment to taking care of their residents, to seeing, as the speaker mentioned, to, to ensuring that, um, that residents are well taken care of in being moved in a caring way to housing, um, that they, uh, that they need and they feel comfortable in. So, um, all in all, this is a, you know, very worthwhile project. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you, councillor Carr. Councillor Hardwick, up to five.
Thank you. This application cites the Housing Vancouver Strategy as a precedent in its council authority and previous decisions on page two of the referral report. In May of twenty twenty, the council approved recalibrating the Housing Vancouver Strategy post-COVID nineteen, which directed staff to provide detailed housing data to justify its housing targets. A year later, this data has not been provided, so since this application is based on insufficient information, I have no choice but to abstain from voting. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hardwick. Uh, that's it for, um, council's, uh, comments, so I'm going to move to a vote. Clerks. Councillor Bly, councillor Kirby. Here we go. A council that has passed with, uh, none in opposition. Thank you, council. Where are we now? Where are at? Um, council, we're at eight oh nine. Why don't we just take, uh, five minutes and stretch? Uh, having developed sciatica in one of my legs, I'm thinking that's probably a good idea for, so nobody else gets it. So, uh, how about we, uh, take a break until, uh, eight fifteen?
Sounds good.
We'll go to the clerk who will now read the application and summary correspondence.
This is an application by DA Architects to rezone thirteen seventeen Richards Street and five oh eight Drake Street from DD Downtown District to CD dash one Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a thirty-nine-story mixed-use building with one hundred ninety-three units of social housing and a place of worship. A height of one hundred twenty-five point two meters, equivalent to four hundred ten point eight feet, a floor area of fifteen thousand six hundred ten point six square meters, equivalent to a hundred sixty-eight thousand thirty-one square feet, and a floor space ratio FSR of fourteen point zero are proposed. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. One piece of correspondence in support, eight pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to five PM today.
Thank you so much. Just for the public, if you'd like to call in and participate in the discussion on this item, the number is on Twitter and on the live stream. We do have speakers of this council, so we'll move ahead with the, with the presentation. We have Teen Fan from Rezoning Centre from the staff team to present.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just confirming you can see my presentation.
Yep, on both screens. So you're good to go.
Great. Thanks so much. My name is Teen Fan, Senior Rezoning Planner, joined by Derek Robinson, Development Planner. The site is located in Yaltown on the southwest corner of Drake and Richards Street, zoned downtown district. It is next to a bicycle lane on Richards and within close proximity to Parks, the Seawall, the Roundhouse Community Centre, and the Canada Lion Station. It is also located within a high-density neighborhood. The surrounding blocks contain newer rental and strata buildings between twenty-four and fifty-two stories, or just over five hundred feet. Supportive housing, shelter beds, and social service space is directly adjacent, including Kindred Place at twelve stories. That's the surrounding context there. There is a one hundred-foot frontage along Richards and a one hundred and twenty-foot depth along Drake. The nineteen seventy-two building is owned by the Aga Khan Foundation Canada, which served for forty years as a place of worship for the Asmiley community. Next to it is surface parking owned by the MCYH, Multi-Generational Housing Society, a registered Canadian charity. Both owners have come forward to redevelop the site. Shown in blue and green are areas that form the downtown official development plan. The site is an area L1 of the DODP. The downtown ODP sets out provisions for new development under the existing DD zoning. Corner sites with a frontage of less than a hundred and seventy-five feet are considered small development sites. Rezone, sorry, redevelopment of small sites under the DD zoning requires that two-thirds be for social housing and the remaining one-third can be for strata for a maximum FSR of five point zero and a building height of a hundred and twenty feet. However, if one hundred percent of the residential is social housing, which is the case here, rezoning can be considered for a height, density, and use beyond the base zoning. Further, the site lies in the new Yaltown area of downtown south. New buildings here are expected to meet urban design criteria as set out in the downtown south guidelines. Development is to, is to complement the area's distinct urban character by upholding privacy and livability per the guidelines with setbacks, tower spacing, and public realm treatment. The site is also impacted by three view cones, which further guide the contours of the building. Importantly, rezonings can be considered under policies that advance affordable housing. Council is very familiar with the Housing Vancouver Strategy for the right supply and the diversity of new homes, aiming to prioritize rental and affordable housing. The Affordable Housing Policies recognizes the need for expanding affordable housing across all neighborhoods with a priority for the downtown area. The proposal is for a thirty-nine-story mixed-use building to include one hundred ninety-three units of social housing co-located with a place of worship and associated programming space. The building height reaches almost four hundred and eleven feet for an FSR of fourteen point zero, all above four levels of parking. The entire building will be run by one operator, the MCYH, Multi-Generational Housing Society, a registered Canadian charity. From the time of application to public hearing is just under seven months, and the project could generate some six hundred and fifty construction jobs. The building contains a podium, a midsection, and a tower. The four-story podium is set back from the sidewalk. It includes a place of worship with a prayer hall, reading rooms, child-minding space, and multipurpose space, all available to the tenants, the Asmiley community, and the wider community. Levels five to thirty-nine contain social housing, expected to be pet-friendly, indoor space, three rooftop gardens, and a children's play area. The proposal is designed with variety in material for a distinct architectural expression. The building is doing its part, having been designed sensitively to its surroundings. The tower portion is very well-spaced, exceeding the eighty-foot residential tower distance to ensure privacy and direct sunlight can penetrate between buildings. The building has also been sculpted to respect the three protected public views in accordance with the council-approved view-protection guidelines. The presence, the presence of the three view cones create a distinct urban form. Shown on the left, we have View Cone three point two point one, which protects the public view from Queen Elizabeth Park. And it also defines the maximum building height. View Cones B1 and C1 cuts vertically through the site to define the shape of the tower, which protects public views of the North Shore Mountains, including the Lions. My colleague Derek Robinson will now elaborate on the view cones and form of development.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Derek Robinson, Development Planner. As Teen has alluded to, this proposal represents a unique opportunity. And urban design staff believe this is reflected in how the relevant guidelines have been applied to this site, including the recommendation to consider a tower form despite the site not meeting all criteria set out to develop a tower. While several downtown ODP guidelines are recommended to be varied in this case, the proposal is able to accommodate key urban design expectations while still achieving a tower floor plate that is viable to deliver one hundred percent social housing. I'll briefly walk through the following related to the recommended form of development. Livability as it relates to protected public views, the interface with the neighboring development, known as Kindred Place, proposed tower setbacks, and the public realm. Urban design staff are recommending support of the proposed tower form tonight in order to maximize the opportunity to deliver not-for-profit-owned and managed social housing in the downtown south neighborhood. As Teen has outlined, the proposal has been shaped to respect the applicable protected public views in accordance with the council-approved view-protection guidelines. This results in a building form with three distinct elements, the topmost element being a flat iron tower floor plate. The applicant does propose a limited minor two-foot incursion into the bounding edge of View Cone B1 with glass-lined cantilever balconies. You can see in this image, two balconies protruding slightly beyond the green dash line, which represents the extent of the protected public view. These balconies provide pub, public outdoor, sorry, private outdoor space and enhance livability of many of the residential units. Given the constraint of the tower floor plate and the transparent appearance of the balcony projections, along with the fact that this project proposes a hundred percent social housing, staff support consideration of this minor incursion only into the view cone, subject to further review of detailed design at development permit stage to ensure the impact on the protected public view remains negligible. Staff further note that achieving five units per tower floor plate is critical to the economic viability of the project. This need results in some potential challenges with unit layouts in the tower, given the slender and sculpted triangular floor plate. The applicant's design revisions, including the addition of these balconies in particular, improve livability by increasing light and air circulation and providing usable private outdoor space. In addition, all studio units now meet a minimum size of three hundred and twenty square feet as required in the zoning and development bylaw. Should council approve this rezoning, staff will further review detailed unit layouts as part of the development permit process to ensure satisfactory livability standards are met. With regard to the interface with the adjacent Kindred Place development, while no specific interior side yards are required for the podium levels, building massing is expected to maintain a neighborly relationship to adjacent development sites. The applicant has taken several steps to mitigate potential privacy and livability concerns for residents in the adjacent Kindred Place. A folded podium facade outlined in yellow on the left-hand image is proposed along the shared property line, which is angled to provide additional access to light, air, and sightlines for the adjacent units. Additional decorative screening has been provided, and design conditions require additional landscaping intended to help soften the views for existing tenants. Moving to the right-hand image, within Kindred Place, only one unit per floor is oriented solely toward the proposal. Highlighted in yellow, these units represent approximately five of the eighty-seven total units within Kindred Place. Through the development permit process, a minimum of twelve-foot clear sightlines will be provided for these five units in response to design conditions in Appendix B, generally as shown in this section through the proposed building. The remainder of the units in Kindred Place are oriented towards the street or lane rather than the proposed building. And therefore, on balance, the overall impact to privacy and sightlines is deemed to be relatively minimal. In order to achieve the necessary tower separation to potential future towers on adjacent sites, the tower should be placed no less than forty feet from the shared property line and the center of the lane. The proposed tower placement does not achieve these typical forty-foot setbacks. However, staff support the reduced setbacks, given the adjacent sites cannot currently achieve a tower as they are fully developed by council-approved protected public view cones, indicated in green on this image. The three relevant adjacent sites are currently developed with social housing buildings ranging from five to twelve stories. The downtown south guidelines set out a twelve-foot public realm setback along both Drake and Richards Streets, outlined in a blue dash line on this slide. The intent is to provide for a strongly public and pleasing streetscape, which integrates the public and private realm through a double row of trees and display gardens intended to create a pedestrian-scale canopy over the sidewalk. While this twelve-foot setback has been maintained for the podium levels along Drake and Richards Street, the applicant proposes that the residential tower cantilever six feet over the public realm of both street frontages, indicated in orange on this slide. The proposed cantilever, cantilever enables more efficient tower floor plates necessary for the proposal to be economically viable. In this particular instance, the impact on the public street views and the public realm will be minor in nature, and staff support the proposed cantilever, which has been located high enough to maintain a sense of openness to the sidewalk, as depicted in the right-hand image on this slide, while importantly also meeting the intent of the guidelines, including providing planting and a double row of trees. Further improvements to the public realm design are expected, as outlined in Appendix B. And lastly, it's just to note that this rezoning application has received the support of the urban design panel, and the panel's recommendations have been considered by staff incorporated into the revised proposal and into the urban design conditions found in Appendix B. I will now pass it back to my colleague Teen Fan, who will conclude the staff presentation.
Thanks, Derek. A critical component of this application is the level of affordability. Thirty percent of the one hundred ninety-three units of social housing will be at or below the housing income limits. The unit mix contains mainly studios and one-bedroom units, which are appropriate since the primary target group are seniors and people living with disabilities. The remaining units meet the thirty-five percent family housing mix, and at least ten of the units will be wheelchair-accessible. The affordability is also secured with a housing agreement for sixty years or life of the building, owned and operated by MCYH, a nonprofit. There was support for affordable housing, the number of parking spaces, for the height, density, and fit for the neighborhood, and for a mix of demographics in Yaltown. The concerns were for noise, views in shadows, height and density. Some also expressed concerns about the high concentration of social housing and supportive housing in the area with suggestions to locate such housing outside of the downtown core. There was also concern for insufficient parking. Regarding noise, all construction is to comply with the noise bylaw. And regarding views, the proposal fits very carefully into the three public view cones. Also, the tower placement exceeds the eighty-foot residential spacing, which mitigate impacts on private views. Design conditions in Appendix B require additional measures to further Design conditions in Appendix B require additional measures to further minimize privacy concerns. Finally, the proposal does not shadow any of the three nearby parks or public spaces. Second, increases for height and density are supported for social housing and a place of worship. Third, regarding concerns for excessive social housing, policies for downtown South support this housing tenure and also recognize the importance of this area as a mixed-income neighborhood. Finally, fifty-three vehicle spaces exceeds what is required under the parking bylaw available for tenants and for folks accessing the place of worship. Staff support the provision of one hundred ninety-three units of social housing co-located with a place of worship that is well-located to transit and to amenities. Staff are asking council to approve this application, subject to Appendix B. We also want to acknowledge and thank very much the applicant team for their dedication in bringing this project forward, and they will now provide a brief presentation.
Thanks so much. Over to the applicants.
Thank you very much, Tina and Derek and the staff group. Good evening, your worship and councilors. Is my audio clear?
Yes, absolutely. We can hear you.
Great. This is Aileen Lawgley of Larko, and it is my pleasure to be here for this exciting application on behalf of M C Y H Multi-Generational Housing Society with our project team, including DA Architects and our consultants. Larko is representative, agent, and project manager for M C Y H for this project at Richardson Drake. M C Y H is the developer and a registered charitable organization that plans to operate below-market residential accommodations, support, and incidental facilities to seniors, families, and adult individuals who are of low income or in need in Canada. We are excited about this project at Richardson Drake and hope that it will serve as a model for delivering housing to those in need in urban areas around the globe. This project offers an opportunity to deliver substantial scale of social housing in line with the city of Vancouver's objectives, leveraging our experience for this one hundred percent nonprofit project. The development will provide a variety of options for families and individuals, as well as cultural, social, and educational spaces for the community. We hope that it will be a best-in-class urban mixed-use project where people can convene in a number of ways, including socializing, learning, praying, living, and supporting each other. It will also facilitate a multi-generational context, allowing for young professionals, families, parents, and grandparents to have a better quality of life through close proximity of habitation and activities. We have worked closely with staff over the past few years to prepare an application package that is in line with the city's policies, regulations, and below-market housing guidance. We would especially like to express our gratitude to staff for their involvement and support as we together create a purposeful, unique, viable, and beautiful project. At least, we hope you will agree it is beautiful for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. I'm just gonna check the list here. So, Council, we can now ask questions to the staff or the applicants. And again, if for folks who want to, from the public, wish to speak to this, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code seven seven four two zero hashtag, to make it on the list. And on this here, Council, we've got... Counselor Boyle, up first, five minutes, questions to either the applicant or the staff.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have, I think I just have one question for the applicant, which is I'm wondering if you can tell us a bit more about the beautiful and intricate design on the, sort of just above the ground level, and anything the council should know that the public might want to know about the value and meaning of having such such visible Islamic art. At least, that's, I'm happy to know more about the art, but to have that visible as part of the project right in our downtown core.
Thank you so much, Counselor. Maybe I will just, or I will just ask if DA can address that question as they've done the beautiful design.
Thanks very much. My name's Al Johnson from DA Architects, and it's quite an inspiring program that we've had to, been fortunate to work on. And the screens that you see are geometric Islamic-inspired screens, but used predominantly on the base of the building. And they're there to create both intrigue, but also to create levels of privacy as you move through from the more public spaces of the street to the more private spaces in nature, as you go through the building into the areas of worship. There's also vertical screens you'll notice on the balconies of the tower. So, we've used a smaller-scale geometric screen that will serve in the residential units as partial screening for privacy and shading devices as well in those vertical stacked balconies.
Okay, thanks. Really appreciate just having a bit more of a sense of that art there. Thanks, and I'll leave it at that for now, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Fry, up to five.
Thanks, and yeah, echoing Counselor Boyle, it's a beautiful design and very inspiring. I'm wondering if the applicant could tell us a little bit about the the sort of spiritual and worshiping component, and maybe explain a little bit of that, and, you know, His Highness the Aga Khan's commitment to sort of pluralistic approach. And I'm just wondering if you could walk us through what the spiritual component of this looks like.
Thank you very much, Counselor. You rightly point out that a component of the existing property at five oh eight Drake, the existing property as a whole, in fact, is a Jamathkana. A Jamathkana is a place of religious and social gathering for Ismiley Muslims who are followers of the Aga Khan. The Jamathkana has been operating for a number of years. To answer your question specifically on spiritual meaning, the space is a place of solace and peace. In addition to that, it caters to many seniors in downtown Vancouver that live in the area on limited income, and the development provides an opportunity to improve this space. The space will be open to Ismilies as well as to the broader community, and we're hoping this will be a great space for the downtown community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for me for questions. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Swanson, up to five.
Yeah, will this be a pet-friendly building?
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, good. Are you guys gonna have E V charging too?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. What about the affordability? I'm wondering if you're gonna be able to get it, any kind of affordability beyond the thirty percented hills? I know it says in the report that you're gonna apply for the provincial twenty fifty thirty plan.
So...
Did you apply for that, and if so, did you get it, or do you know yet?
So, for the Community Housing Grant, B C Housing, we were not successful at this time. And we would definitely like to deepen affordability. We've been working with city staff to try and see what other options might exist. Part of the challenge here is the constraint of the site, given the triangular tower and construction costs related to it. So, this is a hundred percent social housing project, a hundred percent nonprofit, but I don't want to say we can do more than we can. At this time, we can commit to what we have shared or what staff has shared in the report specifically, and we'll continue to explore what else might be available. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thanks, Counselor Swanson. Counselor Dejanova, questions up to five minutes, staff or applicant.
Thanks very much. I'm just wondering, just a question to the applicant. Is there a reason that you were given by B C Housing as to why your application was rejected this time?
Thank you, Counselor. No, we haven't been given any specifics similar to other applicants we've heard this evening. I think that there was a shortage of funding in many, many projects, and we're hopeful that we may still be able to obtain additional funding. And if we are successful, we'll definitely look at what can be achieved and how that can apply specifically to affordability, which is our goal as well.
Thanks very much. Another question is the nonprofit that you've chosen to partner with and work with on this site. I'm not very familiar with them. How long have they been established for, and what is their mandate?
So, M C Y H has been established for a few years, and really, the mandate is to develop and operate below-market residential accommodations, support, and incidental facilities to seniors, families, individuals of low income, and in need in Canada. And this is a critical project that we're hoping will be very successful in that way.
Thanks. Is the nonprofit a Vancouver-based nonprofit?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's Vancouver-based, and you said it's been established for a few years now? How many other housing projects do they have that they operate?
M C Y H doesn't currently operate any other housing projects, but as I mentioned earlier, Larko as agent and representative is working with M C Y H to do this, given our passion for this project, and will apply all our expertise from development, property management, leasing, and procurement skills to ensure that this is done in as effective a way as possible.
Okay, thanks. Just knowing and understanding some of the issues that can arise with operators and nonprofits, either self-managing or contracting out management. Do I understand then that Larko then is taking on the responsibility for the property management of this, including any tenants? The management of any tenants, or would that still be the job of the nonprofit organization?
Larko will assist the nonprofit to make sure that this project is viable and completed in a timely manner, and will stand behind it in order to achieve that.
Thanks very much. I appreciate your answers.
Thank you. Counselor Dominado, questions up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate the questions Counselor Dejanova asked just now of the applicant, because I had similar questions and was gonna ask about existing housing projects and experience. Instead, I will ask about, the report we received talked about the teneting and largely catering to seniors and persons with disabilities, which is why there's a higher number of bachelor and one-bedroom units, but also some families. And I'm curious if the nonprofit and the Larko would be taking the responsibility to inform families who are interested in this building, if it's approved, to let them know about the fact there is no available space in Elsie Roy or Crosstown Elementary, which is the nearest schools to this proposed building, and so that they know in advance in looking for a home that this may not be the best choice if they have young children, different if you're older children, but I'm just wondering if that's something that they would take responsibility for, to make families aware of that.
Thank you very much, Counselor. So, fundamentally, we hadn't thought specifically about the limitations that we might need to articulate, but I think you raise a good point, and, you know, obviously, any location will have advantages for some and limitations for some, and we'll be sure to be very upfront about what those are as we share the availability and consider the lease-up of the property.
Yeah, I think it's important. A lot of people, it's like when you're looking at real estate, and they tell you all the different amenities for a home you're looking at, and they'll say, well, there's nearby schools. Well, in this case, you've got two nearby schools, but they have no capacity for kindergarten entry. So, just a consideration, I think. And I just wanted to go back to the question around experience. You said, so, no experience in delivering housing at this time, the nonprofit, in terms of managing the housing and teneting process. Is that correct?
Thank you, Counselor. So, as it pertains to M C Y H specifically, no, but Larko obviously has an extensive record of developing, leasing multiple projects in and around Vancouver and in other places as well. So, we're hoping that we can apply that experience and ensure this will go extremely smoothly.
Okay, and one last question. Thank you for that. And has Larko done similar partnerships like this with a nonprofit in the past?
In some contexts, yes, but nothing quite like this. So, you know, we've certainly had nonprofit elements of certain projects, as an example, at our Butis. But in this particular context, this is a hundred percent nonprofit and will be delivered. We've also been working on a project in Toronto, you know, with another nonprofit. So, there's definitely some experience in that regard, and we really look forward to being able to do something special in Vancouver, which is an important location for us.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. That is it, I think, for questions. So, now we're gonna move to hear from the public. Council, we have a number of speakers set to speak to this, and I'm gonna start with Corey Colville. I think I'm on the right list here. Yes, Corey Colville, speaker number one.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, Mayor and Council. I first and foremost want to communicate my support for this project. I'm a downtown resident. I frequent Yale Town, and I have hiked the Lions before. I'm beyond thrilled to see a project like this come to my city, come to my neighborhood. I've never seen anything like this before. A mixed-use, high-rise, social housing development, it is absolutely wonderful. It should be approved. It should be supported, but there's one thing, and I don't want to criticize the project team. DA and Larko did absolutely terrific work on this, but they had to go through architectural gymnastics in order to deliver an inefficient floor plate. And I want to go back to my opening comment where I said I was a hiker, and I'd been to the Lions. And I don't mind if I can't quite look at the Lions from, you know, kilometers and kilometers away. And I want to, you know, just recommend for city council and mayor consideration here, why don't we allow social housing to encroach into the view cone ever so slightly by twenty feet to allow for an efficient floor plate, one that could deliver probably twenty-five to forty percent more social housing? We desperately need it in our city. On top of that, the economics of the project would be better. I can't begin to describe how expensive it would be to build this flat iron, triangular-shaped chamfered design. That's the same thing as the Shangri-La. And what we want here, as residents of the city, we want vibrancy, we want more people, we want more shelter, and that would achieve all of these goals. So, you know, with that noted, I would encourage support for this project. I'm very happy about this project as a neighbor, but I would encourage a rethink on the architectural gymnastics that were applied to this site to constrain it so violently. When, you know, if we looked at this arbitrary viewpoint that was established fifty years ago, or whatever it was in the city, we can look at the Lions from many places. And if we encroached into the view cone space just a little bit to accommodate more social housing for more people, more residents, we wouldn't even impact the money shot of Lions. We would still have a clear shot at the view everyone wants to see. So, with that noted, I'll turn it back, but appreciate the opportunity to have communicated my concern and my support.
Thank you. You have a question from Counselor Hardwick. Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes, please.
Yes, Corey, do you work in the real estate investment business?
Like twenty percent of this people in the region, I'm employed in the real estate investment business. I'm also a volunteer for a not-for-profit housing society.
Was just trying to understand your choice of words. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Thank you so much for calling in. We're gonna move to our next speaker, who's speaker number three, Farouk Ishmael.
Hi. I appreciate the time to speak to you guys today, and I myself am a resident in downtown. I appreciate the time to speak to you guys today, and I myself am a resident in downtown. I live two blocks close to the proposed site. I'm just two blocks away, and I also work in downtown. So being a resident in the area, you know, I'm extremely excited for a community building like this, for both myself and my neighbors to share. I can see so many benefits of having a multi-generational-use building like this in the community. And I would really like to stress the importance of having something like this in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks so much for calling in today, council. Our next speaker is Anne Ratani, speaker number four.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor and council, for hearing me this evening. My name is Annie Ratani. As a resident of Yalton, in my view, this proposal at Richardson Drake is exceptional. Affording housing is a critical issue in Vancouver and should be critical to city council. The current pandemic will have a lasting effect on many residents of downtown, financial, physical health, and mental health. This project seeks to improve the lives of our seniors and our young families by mitigating these issues. There's also something truly unique about bringing residents together from various generations as a solution to our current circumstances. Fostering a multi-generational community to thread the webs of connection that will be needed after we emerge from the isolated style of living is very forward-thinking. It is this type of action that will help address the issue that will arise as our community overcomes the challenge of this pandemic. To see a not-for-profit society take this marquee site in Yalton and choose this usage is inspirational. While there may be measures, putting people in community first should remain a steadfast tenet of the city and of city council. I am in support of this project. Thank you, Mayor and council, for hearing me this evening.
Thank you so much. I don't see anybody on the queue for questions, so we'll move to the next speaker again. Thank you for calling in and sharing your thoughts. Council, the next speaker is Speaker number five, Alicia Visram.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm speaking as a member of the community in support of this project. I think it's an exciting project for our community. The ability to obtain affordable, stable, and good-quality housing has long been recognized as a key determinant of health. I love that this project creates a space that individuals can call home and gives them a sense of security and belonging to the community, which ultimately can have significant effects on their health and quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. I have a question for you from Councilor Fry. Councilor Fry, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Last name Visram. I know a couple of Visrams, Billy and Shalina.
Joining the meeting.
So I'm guessing you might be able to speak a little bit.
Oh, we just have somebody. If I could have people mute, that would be great, because we're getting a bit of background noise. Councilor Fry, please continue.
Sure. I'm wondering if, I'm noting a couple of my colleagues had some questions about the MCYH Multi-Generational Housing Society, and I know that this project is also being done with the Aga Khan Foundation. And I'm wondering if maybe you might be able to speak a little bit about the Aga Khan Foundation and the kind of work that is done by that charity.
Speaker, of course, you don't have to answer questions, but feel free to respond if you'd like to. Clerks, do we still have the speaker on the line?
Yes, Mayor, she's still on the line.
Okay. Speaker, did you like to respond to that? Or?
It's okay, Mayor. I know we have more speakers, we can move along, and I'll ask.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Fry. That's it for questions for the speaker. We'll move on to the next speaker. And we have Chaya's Aladina.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate the time. I'll keep my comments brief, but I will say, when I did hear about this project, I was quite ecstatic, because there's quite a need for quality and high-quality and affordable housing in downtown Vancouver. You know, the entire downtown core and area would really benefit from more social housing that really caters to vulnerable groups that may not necessarily have the ability to live here. So I'm definitely in favor of a project like this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I don't see any questions for you either. So again, thank you so much for calling in today. And we're going to move to the next speaker, who is Christine Allman, speaker number seven, Christine Allman.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Christine, and thanks again so much just for the couple of minutes to share my thoughts on this amazing project. I'm actually just in full support and really excited about this project. I'm a teacher, and just really, at the forefront of my mind is housing affordability for vulnerable community members, colleagues, students, families. And I'm really happy that this project is about affordable housing in the downtown core. It has really become expensive to live here, and I really feel that this project is long overdue, and I really feel that we need more projects like this in our city. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll move on to the next speaker. Next speaker, speaker number eight, Farida Nangi.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council. I live in Yalton, and I'm a senior who's been here for a number of years. I'm supportive of this project in Yalton, as it will provide positivity for the seniors, as they will benefit from the multi-generational model. The sense of belonging by men and women will be enjoyed. You know, communal fitness, games, and prayer will prevent me and others from getting lonely. Yalton has a residential feel despite the tall buildings around. This project will add to the Yalton community feeling, where people of different ages and cultures can enjoy a closeness within one building that will encourage socializing and communal practices, like the rooftop gardens, exercise areas, and for those who attend the prayer facility as well. Seniors need inspiration and interaction from the younger generation, and this residence is a perfect place. It will help overcome loneliness and fostering a community feeling in Yalton. In fact, these are many of the directions that the Aga Khan Foundation takes, where its aim is to alleviate poverty and have people live in harmony within their community at large by empowering people and seeing things into the future for their wellness. I think that this facility will foster those sentiments of the Aga Khan Foundation, and I hope that this project is supported. These are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for your time today. Councilor Fry, up to five minutes for questions to the speaker.
Thanks, Mayor. Farida, are you still there?
Yes.
Yeah. Hi. Thank you for joining us and speaking to us. I know a few of my colleagues had some questions about this society, and I know that it is connected with the Aga Khan Foundation and the work that Ismaili community does. And I'm wondering if you could kind of elaborate more on just the sort of mission of the Aga Khan Foundation for folks who may not be that familiar with it.
Yes, thank you for that question. The Aga Khan Foundation's aim, whether it be in Canada or across the world, is to empower people of that region where they're doing their work, whether they are Muslim or non-Muslim. In fact, most of the work that the foundation does across the world is for non-Islamis, and the idea is to empower these people out of poverty and those who are marginalized to provide skills and education and resources so that they're able to trampoline and have families that can contribute to their country or their city. So in this case, for instance, this project would foster the idea of community feeling in Yalton, the idea where each generation is helping one another, and it's open to everyone in the community. We want to foster this idea of togetherness. We know that Vancouver, like many big cities, has sometimes been pointed to as people being very lonely, and seniors are lonely. And a project like this can help bring all the generations together and use this model for future Canadians and those especially in downtown Vancouver as a model to overcome loneliness and bring more synergy and harmony with different age groups. I hope that's helpful.
That is helpful. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fry. And thank you. There are no other questions for you, speaker. So I'm going to move on to the next caller. Speaker number nine is Mary Sparassio. Is Mary Sparassio on the line?
Am I muted?
There you go. You're on.
There I am.
There you are. Up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillors. I live on Richards Street, and I have for 18 years. It's my neighborhood. I really like it. I know my neighbors. I try and say hello and meet new people all the time. So I'm excited by this really beautiful building that will have more seniors in it and families. I want my neighborhood to continue to grow, to be a city, and to be welcoming. And we have great parks in this area, and we have gathering places, and the Roundhouse, of course, is wonderful. But that they're going to be offering more places for people to gather and meet is very exciting to me. So I really hope you will approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your time today. There are no questions for you, so I am going to move to the next speaker. We have speaker number 10, Omar Ladak.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for a few minutes of your time. I just want to very quickly put my full support for this project. I've been a resident of Yalton for 15 years. I think this is a wonderful project that will enrich the neighborhood with the wonderful initiative for many of the reasons that have been mentioned. And so I hope sincerely that the city will support it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for calling in. I don't see any questions for you, so I am going to move to the next speaker. Council, the next speaker is speaker number 11, Abdulaziz Kara.
Thank you, Mayor and councillor, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am calling in favor of this project. My mother's lived in Vancouver and in the downtown area for over 40 years, and so we welcome the building of a complex with social housing. It would make it affordable for seniors like my mother to live there and enjoy being in a vibrant community setting. This is a beautiful building, and all residents of the city would enjoy it, both from the inside and out. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you so much for calling in. Again, no questions from council for you, so we'll move to the next speaker. Speaker number 12 is Shamira Jessa.
Good evening, Mayor and couns-
Hi there.
-support of this project. Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Please continue.
I'm happy to hear that this project, sorry, I'm happy to hear that we will have a new building tower in our neighborhood that will offer social housing, which is so desperately needed. I support the idea of a building project that has multi-use opportunities. It is beneficial to residents of a building to interact with different age groups and demographics. I look forward to hearing more about the project, and thank you for the opportunity to support it.
Thank you again for calling in. No questions for you this evening. So, next speaker up is speaker number 13, Rahim Jawani.
Mayor, speaker 13 is not on the line.
Thank you, clerks. We'll go on to speaker number 14, Nazim Pandju.
Thank you, Mayor and the council, for giving me this opportunity. I'm a resident of Vancouver. I just live a block down from the site that's being developed. This looks like a very interesting concept with housing for multi-generational families, a designated area for prayers, area for social gathering, and a space for learning as well, all of these within the same building. I don't actually recall hearing of a similar project, either in the lower mainland or in the rest of Canada. The design also looks very unique and exciting. It's very different from the other buildings around the area. And I'm also glad to see that there's not so many parking spots in the building. As we know, there's fewer and fewer people owning cars in the downtown area since they either walk to work or take public transport. I'm also glad to read that the building will be energy-efficient, which is going in the right direction. Affordable housing is very welcome in the area. We all know rents are quite high in the whole of Vancouver, and especially in Yalton and the rest of the downtown area. This project will enable seniors and families of lower income to live in the area. I fully support this project, and I hope council does as well. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move to speaker number 15, Alastair Kent.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It has been fascinating and very interesting to hear the overwhelming support for this project, which leaves me extremely torn. On the one hand, I fully support the objectives of the organization of the Ismaili community, who have been wonderful neighbors in the eight years that I have lived in this neighborhood. On the other hand, I have to express fatigue with the amount of development going on in this area, fatigue with the problems that we continue to have on Granville Street. And my feeling is that we already have a lot of challenges to deal with. And therefore, I have to ask whether this massive development, 40 stories, that is going to be predominantly populated with seniors and those with disabilities unwell people. And we've heard that they're small units, awkwardly shaped, two elevators. What's going to happen when you have difficulties, when you have emergencies? How is this going to work? I hear that MCYH has no experience in operating this kind of a building. I hear enthusiastic words from LARCO, the developer, but I don't hear any substance that's really going to support how this is going to function in our neighborhood. So I really feel that you ought to ask yourselves, council, whether you can take this on responsibly on our behalf as the residents in this area, or whether you should ask for a more modest development, such as we heard in the last submission, which sounds to me as almost a senior eligible for this kind of housing. I would far rather live in a six-story building with a courtyard and access, ready access to the neighborhood than I would being stacked in a 40-story high building. It sounds beautiful architecturally, and I admire all of those aspects, but how is this going to work? I really, really ask you to question your staff. Have you ever done this before? What credibility is there in accepting this as a workable project that is truly going to serve the needs of the prospective residents? I would also hope that we could understand where these residents are coming from. So, that's the guts of my questions to you. I hope you appreciate that I am torn between supporting social housing, supporting the Aga Khan and Ismaili community as good neighbors, but I really feel that you need to take a step back, council and staff, before rushing headlong into this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time this evening and your thoughts. There are no questions for you, so I am going to move to the next speaker. you, so I am going to move to the next speaker. Okay, council, we're on to... Oops, sorry, I just lost my place on the list here. We're off, we have sixteen, Nilofer Shidmir?
Yes.
Hi there, we sure can, up to five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Nilofer Shidmir, living in the Oscar Building across the street from the site. Like the last speaker, I am in support of social housing, however, I'm against this project. I would like to voice my consent, I have three consents. The first one is the health of the residents on Richard Street like ourselves. Since 2015, there has been all the time construction projects close to us and it has affected my own health. I have serious concerns about my own health because, as you know, some pollution is the worst kind of pollution can create the mental health for the residents on these streets. And I've had many other people in my building being frustrated and voiced the same concern. Myself, I've been mortified when I learned that there will be another project on this project and on this street and especially a high rise of thirty-nine floors. My second concern is about the privacy of our homes. This building will be very close to the Oscar Building and we need to have blinds and curtains closed all the time because it will encroach on our privacy. And even though, you know, you might say that, okay, this building, the windows are tinted, but what about us? We already talked to some companies, you know, how to protect ourselves against the pollution, sun pollution and about the privacy and it would cost us twenty to forty thousand dollars. We are poor. Yes, these people need housing, but we need protection too. And the third concern is about our safety. Since this neighbourhood has been upside down, you know, there are lots of drug addicts in the neighbourhood, in the Emery Barnes parks and also lots, the neighbourhood is littered and this is the place that people and children play. And in our building, there has been two signs that, you know, some people entered our building and they are threatening our safety, we need to call police. At the end, in the end, I want to say I'm a Muslim and I've been in this prayer house, it's called Jamat Kana, a few times with Ismaili friends and I like to, I don't like this place to go, so why not to make more kind of community-oriented buildings here and some kind of another, you know, prayer house, some playground for the children or something that community can benefit than harming the community by the sun pollution, safety and infringing on our privacy. Thank you for giving me the time to this speech.
Thank you so much for participating this evening and your comments. There are no questions for you, so I will move to the next speaker. Thank you, council, the next speaker is, final speaker who's registered, speaker number seventeen, Peter Straka.
Good evening, my name is Peter Straka and I am one of the residents living on Richard Street and facing exactly the, basically the development site which we are discussing today. Unfortunately, I'm going to be voicing exactly the same sentiment as the previous two speakers. I am very strongly against this project and here are my reasoning. We moved in our apartment sixteen years ago and to the point of view which we had was we wanted to have a view of the water and we wanted to be very close to the point of worship. And we really love our place, but unfortunately, I think in ten years ago, 2006, 2007, there was, since 2006 probably, there was not single year which new building were not being torn down, basically digged down and developed within vicinity of one block away from our place. And it is very unfortunate and I don't have really explanation for that phenomenon, but it lasted for almost, you know, like almost decade that we never experienced peace and quietness around this part of the town. And it's unfortunate because we take the trip around the town and we see some of the places where we see the canopy, which has been basically most and washed out for at least twenty-five to thirty years and nothing is happening there. And unfortunately, in our neighbourhood, it seems like there is no six or twelve months without new project being started out. So I am very disappointed to hear the place of worship which we really appreciate and even though we are not part of that community and we are not part of that faith belief, but we appreciate that, that the people congregate that and they do, they do, you know, express their beliefs and we consider it as an anchor of community, that being now replaced with thirty-nine-plus stories building, that is impossible, that is absolutely ridiculous. So we really are disappointed that that's happening in our neighbourhood right now. And I could name you at least six or seven buildings which has been developed within vicinity of one block away from our part of building and within, as I said, probably within decade. So that is absolutely ridiculous. I think I'm running out of time, but at this point, I just want to say I'm strongly, strongly opposing this project. I was envisioning the Green Garden Water Fontaine, place of worship, the place where the people and elders of this community would gather and not be looking at the thirty-nine high-rise. That's all what I'm going to say. Thank you very much and have a good night, bye for now.
Thank you for your time this evening, there are no questions for you. Appreciate you calling in though. Council, that's it for the registered speakers, so I'm going to call a first time for speakers, the number is on Twitter and the live stream. Clerks, I'm just going to ask, are there any speakers on the line?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Okay, here comes number two, call, same thing. And we'll just check, are there any speakers?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Okay, third call for speakers, the number's on the live stream and Twitter. It is nine eighteen, council will come back at nine twenty-three for debate and decision or to hear from speakers if they're familiar.
The line.
Great, speaker nine, if you could just let us know your name and you have up to five minutes to speak.
Yes, thank you, Mike.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, your worship, your worship and fellow councillors, my name is Rahim Jivraj and I'm actually set to speak at the four-eighty Brownton Development Plan and by happen-
Hi, you're a little faint. Your cell seems to be fading in and out.
Okay, is that a little better now?
A little better.
Okay, so as I was saying, I'm actually registered to speak for the four-eighty Brownton Development, but by- ... that.
Yeah, the speaker, we've lost you again.
Now?
Nope, still you're, you must have bad reception where you're standing.
Okay, how about now?
Yep, well, I'll let know if you fade out.
Okay, thank you. So I don't know what you caught there, I said that I was actually signed up for the Brownton Development hearing, but by happenstance, I heard about, I've been on the line and I've heard about the Ismaili Prayer Hall. My name is Rahim Jivraj and I'm Ismaili and I've lived downtown since 2002. In fact, I used to live across the street from the Jamat Kana, where I lived on Seymour. And I just wanted to share with you my support for this project on the basis that I've been attending that Jamat Kana since 2002. Now I have a five-year-old son and a two-year-old daughter and we've been attending that Jamat Kana as well. We attend there for prayers, but we also attend there for secular education. For the last five to about five years, I've also been volunteering at the Jamat Kana as a bus driver, a seniors' bus driver, where I would take a bus and pick up Ismaili residents or Ismailis that lived all across downtown to bring them to Kana. And I can tell you that I believe seniors, like the ones that I picked up, would benefit from this type of proposal because these are elderly people that can't necessarily walk well or travel and commute to Kana. So they stand to benefit by potentially living at the development, which you heard Miss Leljey say is not exclusively for Ismailis, but there may be some senior Ismailis that would want to live there. In fact, I'd be excited to have my own parents apply to live there because they would fit into that income threshold in order to qualify. So again, by happenstance, I just wanted to share my support for the Ismaili community, for the prayer hall, the Jamat Kana, for the social housing aspect of it. And that's all, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for your time, I have councillor Dejanova on for questions, up to five minutes.
Thanks, sorry, Mayor, I was on for questions to staff, so I'll take myself up.
Okay, thanks, councillor Kirbyon. Questions for the speaker?
Um, no, sorry, Mayor, that was earlier, it was going to be for staff, I'll wait.
Okay, thank you, councillor Frye, questions for the speaker?
Yeah, I do have questions, sorry, was it Rahim? I'm sorry, I missed you.
Correct. Correct, it's Rahim.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for joining us and a good happenstance. And I appreciate that you're Ismaili and that you regularly attend the Jamat Kana. I'm wondering if you could explain, because one of the things that hasn't come out, but I am aware, is that the Ismaili community has been fundraising for this and there's been a lot of support from Aga Khan Foundation. And I'm wondering if you could explain some of the, what dasand means in the Ismaili community and what the significance of a lot of this work and the support for this kind of housing is. I think it's an important story to tell that hasn't been told.
Yes, thank you councillor, dasand is the equivalent of a tithe. So it's an obligation of every Ismaili member to give part of their income to the faith. And from that, the faith then distributes the money for operations and facilities and other programmes that the Ismaili community supports. You may be aware of the Aga Khan Development Network, which does work around the world with education and schools and places of worship and much, much more. There's programmes, I mean, even in Canada, I can tell you that as a young parent, again, I had referenced that, you know, my son, I take my son to the Jamat Kana on the weekends for religious classes and, you know, there's outside speakers that are brought in from the Vancouver Republic Library or other educators and our dasand would go towards those programmes, I believe. Of course, I'm not privy to exactly how it spends, but, you know, I would think that some of that money goes to, directly to the community's betterment.
So I guess where I'm trying to tease out here, this is also sort of an altruistic expression from the Ismaili community in the, is that the intent here?
In my personal opinion, I would say it is, yes. I mean, you know, our community, I think, as you've seen, is very giving and constantly working on projects in Canada, in Vancouver and around the world. So this would be a project that would give back to the community, as it says, it's, you know, a hundred percent social housing project, it sounds like. I think it's an incredible opportunity for our community and for the non-Ismaili, the broader community as well.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, thanks for joining us, Rahim, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you councillor.
Thank you councillor Frye, that's it for questions for you caller, oh, councillor Dejanova, no, you have questions? Okay, no, no, that's it caller, thank you so much. Going to ask the clerks, anybody else on the line for this item?
No additional speakers for this item, Mayor?
Thanks so much, so now we're going to move for questions to staff. Just have to, just one second here. Council, so we're going to close the speakers list and we're going to close the receipt of additional public comments. And going to ask the applicant, applicant, do you have any closing comments? And gonna ask the applicant, applicant, do you have any closing comments?
I just wanted to thank council and staff for all your work on this project and we really hope that you will consider this and approve the bylaw as presented this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Staff, any closing comments?
Good evening, this is staff here. Nothing just to say thanks to the speakers that took the time to call in and thank you to the applicant team.
Thank you. Okay, so questions to staff at this stage. Counselor DeGenova, up to five minutes, questions to staff.
Thanks very much, Mayor, and this question's along the lines of what the last speaker had spoke about in, in talking in terms of, of what, what he thought the, the funds were going towards or how there was funds being raised in the community. I'm just wondering specifically with and looking through the report, but also just looking for access through search engines to the, to M-C-Y-H and the Multi-Generational Housing Society? I'm just wondering if our staff have, have, I mean, at the time of application, writing this report, have you, have you had conversations with the applicant? And this organization as to why there's not a website out there where people can connect through to them directly? And, and did you also secure a list of their board of directors?
Thanks, Counselor, thanks, Counselor DeGenova, this is team here from rezoning. It's a great question. We do know a little bit about the nonprofit organization, M-C-Y-H, and we do know that they were established in 2014. They are a newer nonprofit, they do have five board members. And I think just in terms of the further details around that nonprofit, I might move it over to our housing staff to provide a little bit more color on that.
Thanks, and just while they're, they're taking the line, I'm just trying to understand and I understand nonprofits can be newer, everyone started somewhere, but how do people connect with this nonprofit if they want to be a part of this, as we heard from many excited callers as well? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor DeGenova. It's a great question. I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily know the level of involvement in terms of members of the public coming in to be, to participate, but I do know that the M-C-Y-H Multi-Generational Housing Society is connected to the Ismiley community and the Ismiley community is deeply rooted in values of inclusion and accessibility. And so I think there's probably somewhere in there an element of openness to participation. And I don't know Annie and Sarah if there's anything else to add.
Thanks for that, but I'll wait to see if there's anything else.
Thanks, Tina, it's Annie Moblis here, Senior Housing Planner. I, I think your answer was, I wouldn't add much more than that. My understanding is that through the Aga Khan Foundation and all of the work that they do, philanthropic work in the community, that people would be able to connect with the society that way. But we do know that they're a registered nonprofit housing society and 100% nonprofit and, and fit the definite, the city's definition of a nonprofit housing society, so we're satisfied with that and, and understand that they're well-connected in, in their community as Tina has described. Thank you.
Thanks very much. It's really good to, to know that and understand that and, and I see that they're, they are a registered charity. Just wanted to know how they would connect with people, so thank you.
Great, okay, thank you. Counselor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. So question for staff, I'm just trying to get my head around if a project had come in under these existing DODP zoning relative to this one, and it states in the documentation that existing would have allowed for two-thirds social housing, I believe, and one-third strata up to 120 feet. And we have approximately 3.5 times the height to 410 feet, but 100% social housing for the definition of 30%, 70% below rental. Can you outline what in the original zoning, without a rezoning, that two-thirds would have been of social? Would that also be the same social housing definition?
Hi, Counselor Kirby Young, your rezoning planner. Yes, under the Downtown Official Development Plan, if we were to imagine that as the base zoning, which it is, under the DD zoning, the applicant building under the development permit only, not a rezoning, would be able to achieve up to 120 feet and two-thirds of the residential portion as social housing.
So what's the, and what justifies sort of that three, three and a half old roughly increase in height?
Yeah, it's a great question. We, we understood that the proposal coming forward in front of you asked for increased height and density and increase intensification of uses. And we thought that given what the proposal was for not only two-thirds, but 100% social housing and the uses of, of a place of worship, that that justified coming in through a rezoning to gain additional height and density, just given what the uses were beyond the provisions of the base zoning.
Okay, and the place of worship, which is, I guess, the four-story podium, if you knock that off in round numbers, 39 down to 35 stories versus 120 feet, 12 stories? It's kind of the difference, we're looking at around 23 stories?
Something like that, that seems about correct.
Because the place of worship is, is given weight as an amenity? Consideration, if you will?
Yeah, under the downtown district, under the base zoning, we would allow for 1.0 FSR of non-residential uses. So given that the proposal is coming forward for beyond 1.0 FSR, that would in and of itself come into a rezoning because that under the base zoning because the provisions are very clear in the DODP.
Right. So we're getting X-fold, whatever the map is, more units than we would if they come in under existing zoning?
That's right, that's correct.
Less than double, like about double?
I'm sorry, I missed that last piece.
I said, I said like approximately double then, give or take?
Well, the, 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 the base zoning would allow for five FSR and the applicant is coming forward with 14 FSR. And with a mix of residential and a mix of institutional use for the place of worship, the majority being the residential. So yes, if we took off the four levels of place of worship, the FSR for just the residential would be a little bit less than the 14, 14 FSR, correct?
Okay, it's helpful context, I was just trying to sort of wrap my head around, around that policy shift, since the original DODP included social. Usually we see a, an increase in density significantly to change tenure type. So that's why I was just noting the difference. I appreciate you walking through that. My other question is for the affordable units. And it says targeted for seniors and people with disabilities secured with a housing agreement. What constitutes, what's the definition of a senior?
I think in this particular circumstance, it's secured through a housing agreement. And I'll pass that over to my housing planner, either Sarah or Annie, because I know they, they're very familiar with the, the conditions in the housing agreement attached relating to the tenancy.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselor, it's Sarah Robyn here, Housing Planner. I do wanted to confirm that there is a condition that will be in the housing agreement specifying that those units would be targeted to seniors and that typically is defined as 55 years and over. And then there will also, that will also be accompanied by a definition for persons with disabilities. And we typically use that definition from the federal government.
Okay, since I have limited time, which is not that old, so they would, they wouldn't, that agreement means they would not rent to anybody below that age?
Yes, for those units that are secured seniors housing within, within the building, which is 136 units, those could, could only be rented to seniors and, and persons with disabilities.
Thank you.
Counselor Domonado, up to five minutes. And just before you start, Counselor Domonado, setting council now, we're at 22:10. I, I hope we can at least debate this item today, maybe make a decision. We do have two other items on this agenda, but I think it would take us quite a long time with the presentations to get through them all. So I'm just suggesting that we recess at, at our regular time at 10 o'clock and then come back with the next two items. Clerks, maybe you can let us know what date that would be?
Mayor, it'd be June 29th, 6 p.m.
June 29th. Hey, Counselor DeGenova?
Do you need a motion, Mayor?
No, 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 we would just, we would just move ahead and.
Didn't want the speakers hanging on the line.
Thank you, Mayor, and two questions for staff. One was with respect to, I understand there was some feedback with respect to the UDP around livability of the units because of the kind of unusual shape of the buildings and some of the corners. And I'm just wondering if that was adjusted through this application?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Derek Robinson, Development Planner. So it was addressed, the applicant did make some revisions to the, to the application following the UDP comments. So that was including some additional balconies. And that has resulted in us recommending support of a minor incursion into the, to the view cone. And, and part of that is understanding that really achieving a minimum of five units per tower floor plate is, is really important to the economic viability of the project. And furthermore, there are urban design conditions in Appendix B to address livability moving forward. So should council approve this rezoning, then through the development permit process, staff would further assess detailed unit layouts for livability.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a second question. It stems from one of the speakers because it reminded me of my experience living in a tower down in Yelltown and he spoke to, he mentioned just being two elevators in this building and I don't, you can confirm if that's accurate. And I, I'm not sure what the standard is in terms of a building of this height, but I remember my experience and there was a real lag for people trying to go to and from their units because there was only two and it was a very tall, similar sized building, I would say, probably 40 stories. And I'm just curious if, is that standard for building in size or do we contemplate more?
Thanks, sir, thanks, Counselor Domonado, it's Tina, Senior Rezoning Planner. For this particular building, we have two elevator cores. The first elevator core that goes only up to the, the level four for the place of worship and the associated programming space. We also have a separate elevator core for the residential tenants that go from level five and above. That is appropriate to have one elevator core for the residential tower, just given the tower thickness. It could not accommodate a second elevator core, just given the, the size of the floor plate. So that is very, very acceptable.
Okay, so can I, can I ask a follow-up question on that? Because, so basically the, the, the second elevator won't serve the other residential units. There's only one elevator serving the residential units, is that correct?
Yes, two elevators.
But I think you said one only goes up to the fourth or fifth floor because the plates of worship and then the other goes up to all floors, is that right?
It's too close.
Yeah, so there's the two, two cores, sorry.
Two cars.
Two cars. Sorry, we have for the residential portion, we have one elevator core with two elevator cars.
Okay. So there's two cars. Okay, okay. I was just considering in the context of elevator breakdowns and things like that and accessibility. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. That's important. Thank you. That's it for me, Mayor.
Okay, thanks so much. Counselor Frye, up to five minutes?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. And I'm, I'm curious about the Community Housing Fund and, and, and I think I heard some suggestions that it may or may not get that Community Housing Fund from BC Housing, which obviously secures a, a lot of deep affordability. Do we have any sense what this project might look like beyond our sort of traditional social housing 30/70 mix? In the event that they don't get the Community Housing Fund?
Thanks, Counselor Frye. I'll pass that off to Annie or Sarah, our housing colleagues here.
Hello, it's Annie Moblis here, thanks for the question. The, so, so this project, being a social housing project, is required to meet the city's minimum definition of affordability. So 30% average of hill, 70% market, and that it must be owned and operated, of course, by a nonprofit housing society. So they've achieved that. They have applied, but unfortunately were not successful in the Community Housing Fund call by BC Housing. But I, my understanding is that they'll be seeking, you know, any other funding that might become available. And, and should they be successful, that minimum level of affordability would be deepened, but it would be dependent on the criteria of that funding. And it could either be a grant like the CHF is or financing. And so often nonprofits use a combination of those opportunities provided by senior levels of government to deepen that affordability. But it really is dependent on, on the success firstly of, of the, the rezoning application. Should it be successful this evening or we finish this evening? And then of those opportunities as they become available. I hope that helps.
That does. So there wasn't any indication of, of seeking alternate non-government funding in this instance, perhaps?
Not that I'm aware, no.
Right, okay. I guess that's it for questions. I'm seeing no other questions. I'm prepared to move the.
Thanks.
Back in, Counselor DeGenova?
Thank you, Counselor DeGenova. Okay, I'll move this over to the main queue. If any counselors would like to speak to this, please put yourself on. Counselor Frye, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I, I, I only want to reflect on, on, on my impressions of Aga Khan Foundation and the Ismiley community. And I know the, the degree to which sort of the pluralistic society and the altruism and, and, and and the commitment to this kind of housing and this kind of, this kind of work is ingrained in the culture. And I, I think that's an important context that maybe wasn't totally articulated well enough in, in the presentation. And I, and I, and I noted there was a little bit of confusion around who the housing society was and, and those kind of pieces. But I do have a lot of confidence in what I know of the community and, and their commitment to making this work. So I, I hope that there is a way to make the deeper affordability that's been, been talked about work in the absence of some kind of senior government funding. I will say that it's a beautiful-looking building and I really appreciate the sort of spiritual component and the, the pluralistic spiritual component that they're embedding into this. And I think it's, it's, it's a, I think it's a welcome addition to the neighborhood and I'm, I'm happy to support this.
Thank you, Counselor Frye. Counselor Boyle?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll just really briefly echo Counselor Frye to, to say what a welcome addition I think this is and, and, and a stunning building and, and living built form example of the generosity of the community. And that I think it's especially welcome in these times, you know, following the incident in London, Ontario and the, the kind of increase in Islamophobia, to have such a visible presence of a place of prayer and worship and of community and welcomeness for all. So really glad that we get to have this, hopefully get to have this building and space in downtown Vancouver and grateful to the community that have been contributing to it and the Aga Khan Foundation and, and the leadership that, that has brought this project together to, to be an important part of our city.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle. Counselor Harvick?
Yes, I'll, I'll be brief. This application cites the Housing Vancouver Strategy as its precedent in both policy context and in the council authority previous decision on page three of the referral report. In May of 2020, council approved the recalibrating the Housing Vancouver Strategy post COVID-19, which directed staff to provide detailed housing data to justify its housing targets. A year later, this data has not been provided, so since this application is based on insufficient information, I have no choice but to abstain from voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hardwick. I don't see anybody else on the queue, so I am gonna call a vote on this item. There we go. Thank you, council, that has passed with none in opposition. Maybe the clerks could pull up the screen. Whenever you get a chance, the voting screen. There we go. Thank you very much. That is up. So council, that item is passed. We are at just 10 minutes to 10. Council, not really much time to start the next item, so just ask for.
Motion to recess?
Thank you, until, I think it was June 20, June 29th, the clerks, was that the?
That's correct, Mayor.
Yeah, so we'll recess until June 29th, we will continue with the next item. A second for that?
Counselor Kirby Young.
Thank you, all in favor, yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Oppose, nay? Great, thank you very much, council. We are. Great, thank you very much, council. We are recessed and we'll see you Thursday.
Thanks.
Thanks. Good night.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Dad.
Good night, all.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, everyone. Night, everybody.